This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castelina?
Present.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Susan McCartney?
Present.
Okay, the first item up on our conference agenda this evening is the oath of office of the new council president, Susan McCartney, administered by Mayor Robert Perici.
Stand.
It's my turn?
Yes.
I have my husband Joe here to hold our Bible.
Great, let me just first, before we welcome in Councilwoman McCartney as the new council president, I just want to, on behalf of the administration, thank Councilwoman Matu Brown with a hectic year with a lot of challenges, and this year is starting a lot like last one did. But the administration counted on your guidance and your input, and I'd like to think it was a productive year in trying to navigate some of these challenges. So I just want to thank you for your cooperation and your understanding and your valued input to the many discussions and many things we try to do to serve this community. So I thank you, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McCartney, you ready?
There you go. Yes, sir.
Repeat after me. I and state your name.
I, Susan McCartney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of council president.
Of the office of council president.
According to the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor Perici. Thank you very much. And thank you, Joe. And Mayor, I wanted to, I had the similar sentiment to thank Councilwoman Matu Brown. This year is already starting with new challenges, and that I just hope that we will continue to move forward together and work together collaboratively. We did have a very full year last year, and I think she navigated through the year for us very well. So thank, I thank the administration and Councilwoman Matu Brown for that. I am going to make a motion at this time to move the mayor's correspondence, asking the council for advice and consent on the letter that's on our consent agenda where the business administrator to move that up to the conference agenda along with the resolution that states the same, so that we have another swearing in.
I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just do a roll call vote. Councilwoman Castelina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Mayor, John?
Great. Thank you, Council President. I thank the council for their, for their support of this. So we had an opportunity last meeting to, to thank Jack and highlight all of Jack's successes in this town. It's, I think, and we've been a bit spoiled in West Orange. I think if you talk to a lot of towns, they would tell you that having a BA as long as we had, and we're fortunate to have Jack, is rare. As Karen, our clerk Karen Carnaval pointed out yesterday, it was actually, I think it's actually today, Karen, the fourth, is the 20th anniversary from when Jack was sworn in. So we were blessed to have Jack as our BA for 20 years, and now we, we turn the page on a new, a new era for the community. And, and I thank the council for having their confidence in John, and I think you have as much confidence in John as I do, and looking forward to continuing to work with John. And now it's official that he has no time to himself. And we will continue to be at all our beck and call whenever we need him. But, but of course, you all know that he, he always is anyway. So, John, it's my pleasure to swear you in and ask that you, ready there?
Yep, we're ready. Elena will hold it.
Repeat after me. I and state your name.
I, John Gross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of business administrator.
Of the office of business administrator.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, John. Thank you. Thank you, council. We are, we are here to serve. Thank you.
And Mayor, thank you for that trying late year, all of last year, and 10 months even prior to that. So thank you for your leadership, again, navigating us through that. It was very difficult, unprecedented. We keep hearing that word, and, and here we go again. So thank you again. You have a great team behind you, and we look forward to working with you. So on that note, on our conference agenda, saying that the year is starting off with new challenges, I have asked the Health Director, Michael Fonzino, and our OEM Coordinator, Nick Algrino, to give us, know what we're saying, our new CDC safeguard updates. They keep changing on us, and we'll hear what, what they are advising us to do. And thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Council President.
Can everyone see the screen?
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who might not know me, my name is Michael Fonzino, the Director of the West Orange Health Department. I'd like to thank Council President for giving me the opportunity to provide some brief COVID-19 updates this evening. So currently, the township is experiencing a significant increase in COVID-19 cases, as is the county, state, and the country as a whole. Thankfully, hospitalizations and deaths remain low. Township continues to provide weekly COVID statistics on our website and through our social media outlets, through the Mayor Perici's weekly COVID-19 updates. So you can find these on our website, and if you're on Facebook or Twitter, they're also posted there. So vaccination and testing sites are operational at the county. Our primary site is the former Kmart building located at 235 Prospect Avenue, West Orange. There's various different hours for specific age groups for vaccinations, ages five and up. All vaccinations can be scheduled online at www.sixcovid.org or by calling 973-877-8456. They're currently not taking any walk-ins. The only walk-ins they're taking is for testing, which is conducted at all three of the vaccination sites. In addition to Kmart, Essex County College, and the former Sears Building and the Livingston Mall are the other two county sites. But testing is done Monday through Saturday from 9:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Again, no, no appointments are required for testing. There are additional testing sites, and we have a list on our website at westorange.org/coronavirus. And then there's also a testing page on the COVID New Jersey Hub, where you can search out other testing sites in addition to what the county is offering. Booster vaccinations, they're finding that vaccinations start waning at six months for both Moderna and Pfizer, and at two months for J&amp;J. Boosters are highly recommended at these intervals to provide continued protection. As Council President stated, the CDC and New Jersey Department of Health shortened the recommended isolation and quarantine period for the general public. Now, this, this information is as of today and could change at any time. But I just want to emphasize that these recommendations are for the general population, and there's other guidelines that are different for schools, healthcare personnel, and other ancillary professions. Again, these are the current guidelines and are subject to change by CDC and NJDOH at any time, since the situation is very fluid. I'll just kind of go through this quickly. I'm not going to read it word for word. But currently, if you test positive for COVID-19, regardless of your vaccination status, you must isolate, which means stay home for five days. If you have no symptoms or your symptoms are improving after five days, you can leave your home, but continue to wear masks when you're around others for an additional five days. And if you have a fever, you need to continue to stay home until your fever resolves without any fever-reducing medications. For exposure, if you've been exposed to a confirmed case of COVID-19, quarantining is as follows. If you've been boosted, completed the primary series of Pfizer or Moderna vaccine within the last six months, or completed a primary series of J&amp;J within the last two months, you, you would need to wear a mask around others for 10 days, test on day five if possible. Really, testing should be done between day five and seven. And if you start to develop symptoms, get tested and stay home until you are made aware of the results. If you've completed a primary series of Pfizer or Moderna vaccine over six months ago, and you have not been boosted, or completed a primary series of J&amp;J over two months ago and not boosted, or if you're unvaccinated at all, you should stay home for five days. After that, continue to wear a mask around others for five additional days. If, for some reason, you can't quarantine, you should wear a mask for 10 days, test on day five if possible. And if you develop symptoms, again, continue, I'm sorry, get tested and stay home, and, you know, monitor yourself until you find out what the results of your tests are. Masking is important. Face masks are strongly recommended for both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals in indoor settings where there's an increased risk, including crowded indoor settings, indoor settings where activities with, you'll be in close contact with others who may not be fully vaccinated, indoor settings where the vaccine status of others in the setting is unknown, and where an individual may be immune compromised or increased risk for severe disease. You want to make sure that you correctly wear a face covering or mask, making sure, one, you can breathe through it, make sure your nose and your mouth are covered, that the mask fits snugly against your face. And you want to pick a mask with two or more layers of washable breathable fabric or a surgical-type mask. You want to be sure to wash cloth masks after each use and dispose of single-use masks if you're using them. So in just a quick summary on what the West Orange Health Department has been doing over the past year and continues to do, the Health Department has a partnership with the Montclair State University School of Nursing to provide vaccinations to our homebound residents, long-term care facilities, senior apartment buildings, and our schools. In addition, the Health Department and Montclair State University are providing pop-up mobile vaccination clinics in neighborhoods with vulnerable populations. West Orange Health Department continues to conduct daily COVID-19 case investigations and contact tracing for the general population, schools, and long-term care facilities. West Orange Health Department continues to update messaging and guidelines on our website and social media outlets as information changes. With that, if there's any questions, my information is below. I could be reached via email, or my telephone number is also below. You can feel free to reach out to me at any time. This PowerPoint presentation will also be posted on the township website for those who may want to refer to it later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Michael, or Director Fonzino. We do appreciate that. Best defense, as you said, vaccinations. I appreciate the booster information about how you said the vaccinations may be waning and that we should continue to get boosted, and that to test. I think that has been questionable about when to test. And as you said, developing those symptoms by two to seven days afterwards.
Yes, a lot of people want to, you know, they get nervous and they want to run out and get a test, and that's okay. If you're, if you're asymptomatic, sometimes it's kind of quick. So that's why we, we recommend waiting between day five and seven. If you have symptoms, you should, you shouldn't wait to be tested. You should go out and test it right away.
And, and let me just ask, though, are you contagious during that wait time? You know, I think that's a big question, because we have been asymptomatic, or so many people I know have been asymptomatic.
Yeah, so, so the studies have shown that you can be contagious two days before symptoms set in, and anywhere, you know, up to like five days after symptoms set in. So it's kind of tough to say, but that's kind of what they're finding.
Right.
So, yeah, so if you're, if you're asymptomatic, it's a lot harder to really gauge when the best time. So that's why they say between day five and seven is recommended.
Thank you. I also appreciate the partnership with Montclair State for seniors to provide those vaccinations for them, particularly ones that are homebound.
Yes, it's been working out very well. We're very grateful for the partnership with them, and we, we hope to continue using them where we can.
Great. All right, we'll post this information so that everyone has it and can make contact if need be.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Do we have any questions? Anyone before Michael or Nick leave? Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. Director Fonzino, I think the guidance for boosters was updated. It may have been today or yesterday for Pfizer. Are we going along with that at five months now, or is that still six months? How are we doing it here in Essex County?
Um, to my knowledge, I, I'm not aware that the state has changed anything in regards to the recommendations. So it's, it's still, it's, to my knowledge, it's still the six months.
Okay, yeah, I think the CDC changed the guidance only for Pfizer to five months, but I don't know if that's something that has to be done or is encouraged, or are we still encouraging people to wait till six?
Yeah, so what typically happens, Councilman, is when CDC changes something, you know, it takes a little bit of time for the State Department of Health to sort of align with the CDC guidance. So if, if in fact that is the case, we should know, you know, within the coming days if, if they're going to align with what CDC is going with, which they usually do.
Gotcha. I just, you know, for those that are at that point, if they need to get a booster in their five months, you know, they may or may not be able to get one at Essex County just yet. That's what I'm, I'm gathering from this presentation. Is that right?
Correct. I, I, the county, I believe, is, is, unless they've changed it, which I'm not aware of, but I'll definitely could look into that and let you know.
Thank you.
But as it is right now, they say, you know, six, within six months.
Also, are we recommending N95 masks, not the cloth masks due to Omicron? Or how, do we have guidance on that for our indoor spaces here?
Um, there isn't a particular recommendation for N95 masks. N95 masks, you, you have to be fit-tested for. They, they made a special waiver in the beginning of the pandemic, just because there were so many unknowns. But they've, they've withdrawn that waiver, and I'm sure Nick could speak more to that. But the, we aren't, we're not recommending N95s. Regular procedure-type surgical disposable masks are probably, you know, the best thing to use at this point.
Okay, my, my last question, too. Some of the towns around us have moved to an indoor mask mandate, meaning you must wear a mask indoors at any of the properties, you know, businesses or public spaces within their township. Is that something that we should be considering here?
Well, we, yeah, Mayor, go ahead. Do you want to?
Yes, obviously, Michael and Nick can weigh in from their perspectives, but. And look, we've had a lot of communication from members of the public in the business community on both sides of the issue. So as in many decisions we've been forced to make over these last two years, it's hard to say if there's a real clear right answer, and that's the challenge. But despite what some of our neighboring towns have done, we're not prepared to move in that direction yet. And, and first of all, it's, it's a few practical reasons. First and most importantly, everyone should be wearing a mask. So the fact that we need to mandate it is kind of a little frustrating that we're two years into this and people still feel, with a thousand cases last week, that they shouldn't wear a mask. But, but that aside, we, we don't have, we don't have the ability to police that, and I certainly don't want to put our business owners in a position where they have to police it. So I recognize that it sends an important symbolic message, but from practically speaking, it's, it's difficult to enforce. And I don't want to create a problem for business owners where they're forced to get confrontational with people. Business owners, and may have, they have the ability to mandate it themselves. There's several businesses in town that have signs on their door, "Don't come in without a mask," and they still have that right. But, but just a blanket mandate from the town sends the right message, but not really something that's easy to enforce. And, and I think when you look at the numbers over the last two weeks, though we don't want our businesses to suffer more than they have, truth is, we probably shouldn't be going into businesses. We should stay at home wherever possible, and other than maybe getting required food items at ShopRite or Whole Foods, you know, we should be limiting where we're going anyway. So I know there's been a handful of people who reached out, and, but honestly, a handful of people who reached out and urged not to, too. So tough decision, but our decision is that we're not, we're not prepared to do that. We think people should be wearing the mask. We encourage them to wear the mask. But a mandate does a little bit more than, than, you know, than posting it, because we have no means of governing it, nor, nor should business owners be in a position to, to have to fight with people if they don't really want to wear a mask. So we decided not to. Whether opinion changes in the next week or two, we'll see. But as of right now, we're not prepared to.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I would encourage us to at least consider it. You know, I know it's a tough decision. I don't envy your position. No matter what you do in this kind of a situation, there's going to be somebody to complain, and something is going to go wrong either way, so I completely get it. But I do think, even though it's a symbolic gesture, I think it would go a long way toward encouraging people to wear masks more frequently in indoor spaces. You know, I'm thinking particularly of the ShopRite-type places where you have large gatherings, and some people just don't want to wear them, and, you know, it can be, it can, in some cases, it can be deadly. Thank you. That's it for me. Council President, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Fonzino. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Councilman, Councilwoman Castelina?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Director and our Directors for coming on this evening. Always so important to get that information out to the public. I just want to thank, I know you've been working with the superintendent and the school district as well, and especially in these trying times for our parents. It's, it's been, you know, just hysteria with, with all that's been going on. So thank you for helping them navigate the waters, which is not an easy task. On the township side, I guess this is for the mayor. I know Senior Services has put all their activities on Zoom. Right now, is there any kind of policy? Are we just moving forward with, you know, not having any public gatherings and putting things on hold? How do you see us moving forward, just waiting to see how things play out with, you know, in regards to recreation and town, town events?
So obviously, you know, all this stuff ebbs and flows week to week, but as of right now, there is no plan to have events. In fact, recreational events have temporarily been shut down as of today, and we'll monitor that in a couple of weeks. But no, there's no plans for public gatherings of any sort at this point.
All right, now, is rec having, I mean, as far as basketball games and things of that nature, is that still continuing? Or is all that on hold this week?
Bumbled. I spoke with the superintendent a couple of times this week about that. The, all those events at the various school buildings and various programs are all temporarily shut down.
Okay, great. Hopefully, we'll be out of this sooner than later. From some of the reportings from South Africa and other places on the other side of the globe, it seems to pass quickly. I hope we're, I hope it's, I hope it's true. So we'll see.
Yeah, I don't mean to laugh, Councilwoman. Obviously, we're all optimistic. We're all saying two to three weeks. But it was almost two years ago where two weeks was going to flatten the curve, and here we are.
Crazy.
Still, so they are cautiously optimistic about saying that this wave will wind down by the end of the month, and, and so are we. But at this point, I don't think any one of us are really prepared to make any predictions.
And, and just one other recommend, question for our Health Director. Of course, with folks, if you're feeling, you know, I myself am recovering. I, I should have got my booster, and I kept saying I was going to go, go, and then boom, I got sick. So definitely say at top again, your booster. And it was a tough, tough Christmas this year that I missed. Not fun at all. But for those who are really feeling their symptoms hard, naturally, of course, to our Health Director, you know, get in contact with your, your local physician. You know, that's just so, so important. If, if you're trying to ride this out and hearing what everybody else is doing, you know, I'm going to, you know, ask you if you have any tips on that, Director Fonzino.
Absolutely. I mean, if, if there's any question, it's always. Absolutely. I mean, if, if there's any questions, always consult with your, your primary healthcare provider. And if, if they're not available and you're really not feeling well, you know, in urgent care or a last resort, emergency room, it better be safe than to, you know, take any chances.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. So interestingly.
Council President, so, so sorry, before you move on, can I just ask a question? That's okay. Um, I, I just wanted, because I know that there have been a lot of questions from the general public with respect to Town Hall and why isn't it open? And I just wanted to share, and perhaps Mayor, you can chime in, or Mr. Gross can chime in with what's happening currently. And I will say, I am glad that we have not opened it to the general public, because this type of situation that Town Hall is in right now with our staff, you know, should the public be in the building? It certainly doesn't help mitigate the spread. So I'm glad that the administration has taken the position of not opening the building yet. But can you speak to the, um, our staffing right now as, as it relates to those impacted?
Um, we're currently, um, in flux. About, you know, fifteen to twenty percent of our staff has been out. And it looks like that's going to continue over the next few weeks if, as this rolls through. We're starting to get some people back, and of course, we're starting to lose more people. So we, we expect it to be pretty even, somewhere in that area, fifteen to twenty percent. We are still providing all services. We have, we have not cut back. We, we do have some scheduling issues from time to time. But we're, we're, we continue to maintain services, and we will, that's, that's obviously the goal.
Thank you. Thank you, Castle President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, despite COVID, what I wanted to put together, and I thank our Public Information Officer and Town Historian Joe Fagan and our moderator Megan Brill for what I would like to share with everyone. We have all, I believe, have all felt disconnected with this virtual, you know, mode of operation for the past almost two years now. So I wanted to show just how much was accomplished during 2001 that kept our community engaged, mostly outdoor events, and just safely throughout, throughout the year. So please bear with me. I'll just read off some of the captions here. We started January 2001 welcoming and swearing in three council member, members, Councilwoman Catalina, Councilman Rutherford, and Councilwoman Williams. And we have in our first slide, Megan could put the cursor up there, and this is January. In January, the SIR team all during 2020 are being recognized here at the Clipper Pavilion for delivering lunches and dinners throughout the year to homebound seniors and residents. And that's still going on to this day. In February, we were hit with three feet of snow. And so this is a thank you to Public Works and our police and fire, because they just sprang right into action with the power outages and road closures. That's a thank you. The West Orange Environmental Commission were able to do our annual Earth Hour just before the governor issued the executive order to close things down. We safely scheduled our elected officials and guest speakers, and particularly many of our students and teachers to come in and present at our annual Earth Hour event. We were very enthusiastic to have the Council President, Too Brown, reinstate the Economic Development Commission. We look forward to seeing more activity from the commission. Because we were all meeting virtually, the West Orange Chamber of Commerce continued to have networking events. And they had, instead of St. Patrick's Day parade, unfortunately, we had a parade of business owners, so we can meet our new business owners and network with, with our, with our chamber members. With the outcry of stop Asian hate, we had this event in, I believe that was in March, with gathering together in Town Hall. See, everyone still has their masks on for the Asian-American and Pacific Islanders, just showing our community support. We have what has materialized. Once all the snow melted, all the trash and debris became evident, and community volunteers mobilized to clean up the town. This has now materialized to become West Orange Citizens Against Litter Campaign, and they have been scheduling events to go out and clean. So if anyone is looking for information, wocalteam@gmail.com if you would like to participate and find out the schedule. Here we have, you know, thanking the county exec, and in that particular picture, next with the mayor and Mikey Sherrill and Margie Heller from St. Barnabas. We continue thanking the county for the food distribution, and of course, the vaccination centers throughout Essex County that have been running nonstop. And day in the life of the police and fire continue to work, and here they are being honored in an outdoor ceremony. And through the course of the year, the scouts continue to meet and work on projects that are service-oriented and community-oriented. And here we have our Public Information Officer and Town Historian giving these young Cub Scouts a lesson on South Mountain Reservation. So when spring sprung, the Pedestrian Safety Commission and Easy Ride Volunteers and the Police Department set up a pop-up bike lane with safety skills, of course, all around Redwood School. Very popular, well-received. I know that they will probably continue to do more for this year. Those are some of the police and volunteers. We have the Open Space Commission with a grant, and the, and the West Orange Environmental Commission received a grant from ANJAC, the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, to create the Pollinator Garden and introduce bees up at the Rock, which is six acres of preserved land at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. So that was the ribbon cutting there with members of the commissions and representatives from ANJAC. The Downtown Alliance and the Hometown Heroes banners is just a beautiful tribute to our servicemen and women all along our Main Street corridor. We had, let's see, I'm trying to think of what month this was in June. We started in June. Black Lives Matter, another outcry. They showed the township, I feel like this, that outcry showed the township's backbone with peaceful protests, police reform, training, and creative expression installations at the West Orange Arts Council. It involved the entire community. And during COVID, we saw a lot of the lending libraries leaving books for other people. So you didn't have to go endorse the library, but leaving books to donate and share with residents in the community. And there is one from West Orange High School senior that built a lending library in front of the West Orange substation on Washington Street School. We did have, here's an event here with the Bethany Church of Champions, that Guyton, Pastor Guyton, just recognizing and honoring families, coaches, and community volunteers for their mentoring program. And I, you know, just so many things that we did this year, just to thank you again to our community for continuing to donate and contribute to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry, again, serving hundreds of families in need. Thank you for helping others. And the Farmers Market, the Downtown Alliance and the Farmers Market. Special thanks to Stacy and Rob Reese for providing fun, weekly, theme-filled events each month, each week, I'm sorry, each week at Farmers Market. In summertime, so here it is summertime, and we're kicking off a wonderful season at OSIPAC. Just invite the community to look forward to that outdoor safe environment. We have, you know, the, here we are on the steps of Town Hall again. This is National Holiday of Juneteenth, eighteen sixty-five, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation where it finally reached our most remote state at that time, Texas, and freedom celebrated, and Juneteenth was born. And here in West Orange, we celebrated on the steps of Town Hall, music at Colgate Park, historical lectures in the library, and creative expression of local art exons, it is at the West Orange Art Center. And the Junior Police Academy, those are the local artists there at, on that particular event. The Junior Police Academy saw a record number of students enroll in their proactive program to promote relations between youth and police officers, fostering a better understanding of the law. And in that far corner, maybe it's been cropped out of the picture, but it was a proud moment for many of the families and friends that attained, attended this graduation ceremony. We have more safe outdoor fun with Downtown Alliance, starting the Downtown Thursdays. And this particular one, this was inviting residents to come downtown for music, dance, crafts, and this particular demonstration is an ice sculpture, which many had never seen before. And fireworks, right, why for it's such a deep-rooted, day-long series of contests, competitions, food and fun organized by the Township and the Recreation Department, right up until dark with our fireworks. Again, the Chamber of Commerce trying to promote and help businesses stay connected, did a summer networking event at OSIPAC. And that particular evening ended with a Beach Boys tribute at Pleasant Valley Productions. We, this will be interesting, because I believe Congressman Payne will be at our meeting shortly. And here it is back in August, we're invited him to come to the Thomas Edison National Historic Park to visit the site that he and his father dearly love. And we invited him to see our own national treasure on Main Street. Again, another scouting project. Here we have Councilwoman Williams flanked by the mayor and Director Fonzino and scouts building benches at the animal shelter. And rounded out the summer with Joe Fagan here, dressed in winter wear, even though it is in the middle of summer, dressed in winter wear, unveiling a historic marker across the street from Luna Stage on the Corner Valley Road in Hazel Avenue to designate the first bog and run, which, what, which is now Hazel Avenue. In August, right across, we had so many things going on in August with the Indian flag raising, celebrating freedom, the Haitian diaspora event, the Italian flag raising, and we had the president of the Dominican Republic flag raising ceremony celebrating twelve countries, Hispanic countries. We had in September, the mayor's annual 5K ren, run, all of the proceeds from this event also went to the food pantry, which was continually serving our community. The Nikhil Badlani Foundation had their eleventh annual Stop for Nikhil event at the Sariano Field. The Badlani Foundation, as you already know, support pedestrian driving safety, and they're just forging new road safety legislation. We commend them. The West Orange Recreation Department had our Halloween kickoff here outside a town, Town Hall, giving out treats and costumes and pumpkin. In November, we had the annual Veterans Day Ceremony. ROTC representing, represented there, and members Kim, Kim Amelie and Al Harris, they're veterans, thanking them for their service. Always a fun and spirited in, in December, early December, we had the fun and spirited menorah lighting on the lawn at, at Town Hall. Our traditional tree lighting, which this is the end of the day. But as you know, that also is a day-long event with trolley tours and crafts and art at Washington School. A beautiful event there. And, um, and at the end of December, we thanked Jack for his twenty years of public service. And I end up that note saying that again, we started this 2022 with facing many challenges, and we hope that we will all continue to engage the community and do our best to keep everyone safe and healthy. Thank you for that. I have invited the police chief, I believe that's next on our agenda. I have invited the police chief here this evening because the township was awarded a $525,000 grant from the Bureau of Justice Association. And just as I mentioned in that year in review, the Police Department is to be commended with this partnership with Mental Health Association and all of the things that have been going on within the Police Department. Adopting resolutions, ordinances, eliminating, updating anti-loitering ordinances. In July, we adopted an ordinance requiring police officers to always wear operational body cameras, adopted ordinances prohibiting the use of rubber bullets or tear gas, adopted an ordinance clearly defining directing directives on the use of force and reporting the use of force. We entered into an agreement with a nationally-recognized diversity consultant, trainer, and speaker, Dr. David Jones, who will also be joining us this evening, to provide implicit bias training for all employees and elected officials. And we entered into this pilot program. That is my lead-in for the chief with Essex and Morris County Mental Health Association to assist police on responding to call where that may be necessary to have a social worker alongside. So good evening, Chief. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Uh, go script for a minute and thank Councilwoman Too Brown for her leadership over the past year. It's been a pleasure working with you as the Council President. And to welcome Susan to the presidency once again. Had years of experience with, working with you in the past, and look forward to the, the next year as well. And special thanks and welcoming to my good friend John Gross, who I think will, has always served the town in the past admirably, and I think will continue to do so. And I learn from John every day. I've been doing this a long time. And sometimes, you know, you really think you know it all, and then you sit with John, you find out what you don't know. And he's, he's a good friend, and he's always there for me, so I appreciate that and I welcome him. So back to script. In nineteen, from July of nineteen to July of twenty, we found that we had thirty incidents, three hundred ninety-three mental health calls that resulted in thirty incidents of use of force. Now, the way use of force is tracked in New Jersey is every officer that's involved has to submit a report. So those thirty incidents resulted in eighty-three different filings from eighty-three officers. And when Advanced Media did their presentation to the public on use of force, that didn't play very well for many municipalities, and we were also one of them. Of those eighty-three uses of force, those people that were involved with mental health crisis were sometimes forced into ambulances and taken to facilities where they were better served rather than penal institutions. But nonetheless, their use as a force and, and New Jersey Advanced Media did what they did with that. So we, we looked at it, and we had concerns, and I went to my, my go-to man, Richard Trank, who knows somebody somewhere for everything. So Richard introduced us to Bob Davidson, that, the Mental Health Associate of Essex and Morris. And we undertook a pilot program that was the first in the state, and there's really not that many in the nation. Every, every day when I read, read the online periodicals for what's going on in policing around the country, I see another major city starting to undertake this. But not many of them are, you know, the, the fifty thousand type of municipalities. They're, they're usually big cities that are doing it. So we were really ahead of the curve nationally in policing with this. But we're really, you know, we're the first in the, in the state to do it. I see the state police are now starting to do it. And some of the other municipalities have reached out to me to find out, you know, how we do this. So we did this program, and it went so well that we contacted our counterparts at Millennium Strategies, who are grant researchers. They found a federal grant for us that the maximum award was five hundred and fifty thousand. We got five hundred and twenty-five, and only thirty-six awards were expected to be given out across the country. So So there's a, there's a matching portion, it's a three year grant, a thirty-six year grant. And the, the first two years are a twenty percent match and the last year is a forty percent match. And the council was generous enough to see the, the value in having this program in place and what it's done. Mental Health Associates does a number of things, they, they do training for us. Some of the training that they do is have this all laid out neatly. I'll come back to that. So they wanted, their goal is to identify and provide necessary services to reduce the occurrence of mental health crisis, ensure that crises are dealt with in a manner that provides the least damaging to individuals and most conducive to a therapeutic outcome. And third, to enhance training for law enforcement to persons in crisis and provide access to resources and community based follow up for encountered individuals. So that, that's been what we're, where we're at and what we've been doing. And we're going to do that for the next three years along with Mental Health Associates. They, they also review our body camera footage and to give a special shout out to our prosecutor Ted Stevens, because he really went out on a limb with the, with the confidentiality, anyone in crisis is considered a medical call. So that can't be viewed outside of the law enforcement entity that films it. I had to go and Richard had to go with me and ask the prosecutor for a special permission to allow them to do this. And he did this and now the state is looking for us to be the model for the state. So, you know, once again, this wouldn't have happened without Ted Stevens and I really appreciate him for seeing the utility in this. There's only been four instances out of all the video that Essex Morris has looked at and determined that maybe we could have done something a little bit differently, a little bit better, but none of it was catastrophic where, you know, boy, this is bad, it was always just, you can prove on this a little bit. So as the councils aware, I send them the biweekly evaluations from Essex Morris. And they, you know, you can see for yourselves that the, the officers by and large do a very good job, but the value of having Essex Morris there with them on these calls is immeasurable. And, you know, they've been a great partner and I can't thank them enough for everything they do for the people of West Orange and the people most in need. So that pretty much sums it up without going to a whole lot of detail and numbers. But, you know, our data is, is very positive and I, I worry about how we're going to continue this in three years, but we'll work on that every day by doing so, so well with this that the government's going to want to extend it, I'm confident and hopeful that that occurs.
If we're going to hope that that's true, so the invitation, thank you for accepting the invitation. It was to make the announcement on the grass, on the grant, but also to commend you and the department for those recommendations and for this partnership. So thank you and may I appreciate, yes.
Yeah, if I may, first of all, the chief is being modest, you know, obviously this is a really great program and a great success because of his leadership. And obviously he mentioned Rich's input, just another one of, you know, many successes the town has had that Rich has been behind. So I'm grateful to both of them for doing this, but, but chief, you know, we live this, so you, we all understand it. But I'm wondering if maybe the public doesn't really understand the mechanics. I wonder if you could just talk a little bit more specifically about how when a call comes in, rather than just sending police officers, how you partner, could you talk a little bit more about what the day to day is? And why it's so successful to have these professionals on many, on many scenes, rather than just police officers, despite their vast training, police officers get in New Jersey, having the mental health professionals is, is a huge importance to that. So could you just talk a little bit more about specifically how this works as opposed to just the training and the guidance and how it really makes a difference? You know, for the residents we serve.
So, yes, thanks, Mayor, and I missed that. The, the call comes into the desk that there's someone in crisis and the communications operators are also receiving training, so they know how to deal this, what questions to ask with, what guidance to give the calling party over the phone, what information to give to the police officers. Then they also reach out to the folks at Essex Morris and they're just adjacent to us in the building. So their response time is very quick and they respond as we do, so it's called a co responder program. This works out best for everyone because sometimes with, you know, mentally unstable persons, they can injure these licensed clinical social workers, LCSW's that respond. So it's good to have a police officer there if they need to intervene with force. But they, you know, they, they're there to give us guidance and to explain, you know, how to do things and to take the lead often when they can, because they're better equipped and better trained than we are with this. But it's, it's certainly a partnership and, you know, I, I can't say enough good things about those folks. And I'm, I can see from what they write up about our officers, it's, it's a mutual respect. So from there, you know, more often than not, the individual in crisis is transported. Sometimes, you know, there's sometimes forces is still necessary, but once again, they're, you know, you're not going to an emergency room with injuries, they're going to a facility that can care for their, their mental health concerns. And that's pretty, you know, that's pretty much how it goes, they write it up after that, they, they'll review the body cam footage and, you know, get a second look at it and come up with evaluations. But it, it's again, it's called a co responder program, so they're responding at the same time we are. Normally, the police officer will be on scene first, just by virtue of lights and sirens and things like that, but it's not a lengthy delay waiting for them to arrive.
Mr. Chang, sorry.
Just to add on to the, the logistics of it, Mayor, and obviously the community should be aware that none of this happens without the, the mayor vetting it, listening and, and supporting these initiatives. But besides the co responder, Chief, I think one of the unique aspects of this is the follow up. On two levels, one, the mental health associates and the, and the caseworkers are calling ahead to the facilities. So they're telling them what is going on, they're sometimes accompanying them to the facility. And most importantly, they're following up, the police have a zillion things, as the chief always points out, it's like White Castle twenty-four seven. So they have to move on to the next issue. But the beauty of having Mental Health Associates of Essex and Morris County involved is they'll follow up with the family, they'll follow up with the hospital, they'll follow up with the facility. And so the goal of getting people care and getting them better and stabilized is furthered by these social workers involved. And I do want to, again, Bob Davidson, you know, just like the chief, just like the mayor is the executive director. But there, there are members of the staff of Essex, I'm sorry, of Mental Health Associates of Essex County that is now at eighty Main Street, who have been instrumental. And I'm going to not necessarily get the names right, the chief probably can get them correct. But Christine Sinicky has been amazing, Miriam Cortez, Nadine Venesia and, and, and Ms. Desphine have been awesome. And so again, this is really a comprehensive program that the goal, obviously, one day is that the every call that may implicate these issues have a co responder, because it just makes a lot more sense. There's, there's, I think the chief and all the periodic research shows that a person necessarily responding with a gun or whatnot is probably not the right recipe. Sometimes a necessary recipe, but probably not the comprehensive recipe to get people to help people. So thank you, Chief, thank you, Mayor. And it's so exciting and I see Congressman Payne is there and I'm sure our federal partners have been amazing, as has the New Jersey Attorney General, who recently recognized this program in a special ceremony.
And the, the training that I mentioned, there's six separate trainings, they focus on a variety of topics. And there are mental health, signs, symptoms, de-escalation techniques, crisis assessment, suicide prevention and awareness for the community, law enforcement and suicide awareness, co occurring disorders and substance abuse and abuse for the community, law enforcement and mental health and mental health and racism, cultural awareness. So they're really covering all the bases with us to ensure that we have the requisite skills necessary to navigate these muddy waters.
Thank you again, Chief, for this was an education for all of us to understand the, what police are, what you are dealing with and what the police have to deal with on a daily basis and just keeping residents and our officers safe.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and for the, you know, for the taxpayers, I mean, we, we don't see many grants of, in, in any of our departments in the, in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars, that's rare.
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand.
And it's the initiative of having this pilot program, so you really are on to something. And it looks like maybe the funding will continue on a state level as more and more departments follow suit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Trink. And Mr. Trink, thank you, we did invite, thank you to Councilwoman Two Brown extended the invitation to Congressman Donald Payne Jr. to join our council meeting as our new legislator. So we appreciate that you have our whole district now and we welcome you to our council meeting, Congressman Payne. I know we asked you to come at seven because I apologize that our meeting is running over. But I sure hope that you were on when you saw our year in review because you were featured in there. And we hope that this isn't just the first, just because it's the first of the year, but we would like to hear from you during the course of the year to keep us posted.
Absolutely, and thank you for having me. And it, it was a practice that I'd gone through during the pandemic, trying to reach every municipality in the tenth district. And so, so happens that this coincided with me getting the great news that West Orange will become one, one congressional district as opposed to being split up between two, which I'm sure is a relief for a lot of you. Now there's, there's only one person to yell at, so you know, we can't run that, no, it's the other guy. But I'm really honored to have, to have gained the entire municipality, West Orange, in the ten congressional district. I was very honored and pleased as my father was before me to represent parts of West Orange. And one of our great, great enjoyments was we always bragged about being the members of Congress who had the the, the historic park down there, Mr. Edison's park. And so we always bragged about that, but to encompass the entire community is, I'm looking forward to a, a rewarding and prosperous, prosperous year for West Orange.
So are we.
Thank you. Well, welcome to the ten congressional district. For those of you who weren't in it prior to this year is an honor and a privilege for me to come before you tonight, my capacity as Congressman from ten congressional district of the state of New Jersey. It seems like a good time to discuss how I'm working for you in Congress. You know, as you know, the country is still in the grips of this COVID battle with this third variant that has really plagued this country. And it looks like it's about to send us back inside and hungering down, which is unfortunate. Right now, almost sixty percent of the country has been vaccinated, but you know, we're doing, we're doing better in New Jersey, seventy percent of our state has been vaccinated and ninety percent of our county has been vaccinated. So that is, that, that bodes well. But unvaccinated Americans are allowed to delta in Omicron virus variants to spread and threaten our increasing economy and social stability. Medical experts say that we should wear masks indoors again to protect the public health. We must get more people vaccinated to save lives. I got the vaccinated vaccination earlier on to show that it was safe and I encourage everyone to get it to protect themselves and loved ones. I think we're seeing during the Omicron experience where the vaccination has, has made a difference. People that are getting sick are not getting as sick and there have not been the severe sicknesses and deaths that we saw in, in earlier iterations of this, of this disease. So the vaccinations and the booster do help. It was one example of my dedication to helping you survive during this pandemic. There are several other actions that I've taken in Congress recently to support you. I've been working to promote more federal spending on infrastructure for years. And that's why I helped pass the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. I introduced and helped pass the initial infrastructure bill, the Invest in America Act in the House before this final bill became law. Now, the new one point two trillion dollar funding law rebuilds America's roads, bridges and passenger rail networks for the next five years. It will improve the roads you use every day to get around West Orange and the trains you use to travel throughout the Northeast Corridor. It provides more than eight billion dollars for repair to New Jersey's highways alone. And you might want to get out a pen and paper because I'm going to throw a whole bunch of numbers at you. So you might want to jot them down. It also provides fourteen billion dollars to improve transit in urban areas such as New Jersey, New York and Connecticut. In addition, it contains several other benefits for New Jersey and our district. It provides thirty-eight billion dollars to help build the twelve billion dollar Hudson River Tunnel project. It funds projects to increase efficiency at Port Newark Elizabeth Main Terminal and Newark Liberty International Airport. It contains fifty-five billion dollars to replace lead contaminated pipes to provide clean drinking water for all Americans. I worked diligently to get that funding into the law. I didn't want what happened with Norse water to happen in other communities. So overall, it includes sixty-six billion dollars for other rail projects and twelve billion dollars for transportation upgrades like high speed rail. It includes seven point five billion dollars for nationwide electrical vehicle charging system. Ideally, that would make electric vehicle charging as easy as pulling into a gas station today. The bill includes thirty-nine billion dollars to modernize, modernize our nation's transportation system. Some of this funding would put more lower and zero emission buses on the road to clean the environment. In addition, it provides twenty-one billion dollars to clean up environmental damage from former industrial and energy sites. These sites tend to be located in poorer communities and we must be address them immediately. And the cause of major health problems for local residents in those areas. We need to make every neighborhood safe for every American. There are possible benefits for West Orange as well. I know West Orange needs funds for the city's annual street improvement program and for the traffic and pedestrian safety improvements. Other than the general funds for roads and bridges, the new law contains seventy, seven point five billion dollars for rebuilding America's infrastructure with stability and equity raise grants. It's called the raise grant program. It helps communities pay for surface transportation projects like the ones you need. Also, West Orange needs improvements to the city's water and sewer systems, such as the two new intercept, two new interceptor systems and a modern pump station. The new law includes twenty-three point four billion dollars for drinking water and cleanup and clean water state revolving funds. These loans are, are loans and grants to fund water infrastructure improvements that protect the public and the environment. And definitely something that I'm ready and willing to work with you on securing. They could be used to improve your water and sewer systems. And please contact me in my office if you need assistance with any of these grants. This historic transportation law was one of the reasons I became chairman of the Committee on Railroads. So all things railroads. on railroads. So all things railroads come through my purview now. So I wanted to make sure our rail projects like the Gateway Program had a strong advocate in Congress. Before I became chairman, I helped get the first $900 million in federal funding to build the Portal North Bridge, which is the first part of the Gateway Project. As chairman, I fought to include funding in the new infrastructure law that could be used to build the Hudson River Tunnels. And I have been in constant communication with Secretary Pete Buttigieg about funding and the needs for the Hudson River Tunnel. You know, it's interesting, every, anytime I see the secretary now, before he even says hello, I go to speak to him and he goes, I know the Gateway Tunnel. I know, I know. So I guess I'm getting my message across. Our district and the country needs this new tunnel to make transportation safer and easier for all passengers. But that is not the only way I'm supporting you. Recently, I helped pass President Biden's Build Back Better, Build Back Better Act. This 1.7, $1.75 trillion bill would provide critical resources and services to help New Jersey families and residents. And it would create more than 10 million new jobs in the first five years after it becomes law. For New Jersey families, it funds universal pre-kindergarten for all three and four-year-old children. Studies show that learning and development improves when children attend a quality pre-kindergarten. The bill limits childcare payments to a maximum of 7% of a family's household income. Just think that what that would mean to low and, and moderate income homes in, in, in our state. Just remarkable. It also expands the wonderful child tax credit for another year. The expanded tax credit will keep 167,000 children in our district out of poverty. Other than, other than the family benefits, the lower, the bill lowers prescription drug costs and adds hearing benefits to Medicare. And as a diabetic, as a diabetic, I'm proud to hear that insulin payments will be capped at $35 a month. This is revolutionary. I one time left New Jersey and went to Washington to go to session, obviously, and I left my insulin in New Jersey. And so I went to the drugstore and asked to buy a vial of insulin. And they said, well, you know, Congressman, your insurance isn't ready to pay for it yet. I said, that's okay. I need it. So, you know, I'll pay for it. So the young lady goes and gets the insulin, wraps it up, hands me the bag and then says, $365, please. I was absolutely devastated, not knowing how much my insurance covered this life-saving drug. And then thinking about all the families in need and in poverty that need the same medicine and don't have the insurance that I have. And so I've made this one of my challenges to reduce the cost of insulin for people across this nation. And that provision will help more than 73,000 diabetics in our district afford this life-saving medication alone. The bill expands the Affordable Care Act to provide health coverage for an additional 3 million Americans who don't have healthcare. And it provides $555 billion for investments in America's in clean technology production and extreme weather prevent, preventative protections. Also known as global warming. This funding could help our district avoid another weather damage like we experienced with Hurricane Sandy and tropical storm Ida. The pill, the bill provides $150 billion to improve affordable housing projects nationwide. And it will provide funding to support further higher education. These benefits will be funded through tax increases on corporations and the wealthiest Americans. In addition, it will put a new cert tax on multimillionaires and billionaires, limit business losses on tax returns and close tax loopholes. It will make sure that everyone pays their fair share to a better country. These are only a few of the most recent actions I've taken for our district. Earlier this year, we passed the American Rescue Plan, a $1.9 trillion stimulus package that helps Americans and local governments deal with the effects of the pandemic directly. It benefited West Orange in several ways. It provided the $1,400 help, to help the lower and middle income residents pay their bills. And it included $38 billion to help eligible residents pay for rent and mortgages. And it adds $8 billion to the popular payroll protection program. So small businesses can keep employees on their payroll. And it, it, it also creates a new $25 billion restaurant revitalization fund to support the food service industry. I know that, and I would encourage you to make sure that your eating institutions in West Orange, which are incredible. I try to frequent them as much as possible. Know that these dollars are available for them to recoup losses and continue to serve your wonderful community. We've lost too many of them during the pandemic. And thankfully, West Orange gets help from the MS group, from the American Rescue Plan as well. The plan provided $350 billion and barely needed aid to states and cities. I fought for West Orange to get more than $4.6 million from that fund. And in addition, the plan establishes programs to vaccinate every American and Rico opened every school. It uses $20 billion to increase vaccine production and distribution. I worked to get a federal vaccination center here in Newark to support the entire district. And it vaccinated 6,000 people daily until late June. And it was one of only six federal sites in the country and I was able through my work on Homeland Security Committee to get one of them here in our district. In addition, the plan includes $130 billion to increase vaccinations nationwide. And this funding helped New Jersey return to in-person learning in schools, which I know we were all very happy about. I worked hard to get students back in the classroom safely. I wrote a letter to the Department of Health and Human Services to designate teachers as frontline workers. And after my letter, President Biden made teachers vaccinations a higher priority. And I wrote a letter to President Biden to implement my mask for students act. This bill allows the federal government to reimburse schools for their protective equipment and expenses. Schools, schools need their funding to educate students. And the government needs to reimburse them to support those efforts. So my website dedicated to helping you apply for benefits from our aid packages is as follows. You can visit pain.house.gov. It can help you get stimulus funds, rental assistance and clarity on funding guidelines. Again, my website is pain.house.gov. If you have any specific requests, please call my office at 973-645-3213. We're on the job to help you get what you need. So thank you again for allowing me to speak this evening. I know it was quite a few numbers and believe me, I did not, I did not double numbers. Those are all actual numbers that the federal government has made available to the American people and let's get this nation back on the right track and moving in a positive manner forward. Thank you very much and I'll try to entertain any questions you have.
Congressman, I just wanted to say thank you so much. I did write down those numbers just as you instructed. But it looks more like music to my ears because I know as a municipality, we do want to work on roadwork, improve our word work, road work. We do want clean water, of course. We do want to work on electric vehicles. The emissions, the low emissions for buses, all of the projects that you mentioned, we hope to tackle here in West Orange.
There are so many opportunities that have come out of the work that we, that we, we've done over the past several months. And I'm just, you know, just proud and delighted to be able to have the American people benefit from their government. These are all dollars that you send to Washington. And it's our job here in the New Jersey delegation to fight for our fair share of those dollars back in order to enhance the quality of life for all of our residents. So I am looking forward to working with you diligently and I'm gonna call away.
All right, council colleagues, if you have any questions for the Congressman, besides a hearty thank you.
It just, oh, go ahead, Mayor. I'm sorry. I saw your hand go up.
No, Councilwoman, you first.
Thank you. Congressman Payne, to you, to your office, thank you so much for accepting the invitation. I knew as soon as you started to talk about the infrastructure project that all of my colleagues, if you get a chance to look back, they were all back in class. Dying down because we, as a mayor, will, will, will speak to you, I'm sure about. We've got a lot of projects in, in, in the works and infrastructure is going to be a part of that. So looking forward to being able to working diligently with you as well in your office for the needs of our residents so that we can, you know, lessen the burden on their tax dollars. So very excited. Thank you once again. And Mayor, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank the Congressman. He, Congressman and his father have always been my Congressman, although they've always represented just a, a few districts in town. It's always been where, where I've lived and he's, just to counsel and public, if you didn't already know, he's though only representing a few districts up until now, he's always been very responsive and in my years in government, him and his office have been hugely supportive and whenever we needed him. So grateful for that and looking forward to, to continuing to work with you and your staff and, and having you represent the entire community. So thank you Congressman for being here. Thank you for your service and we'll thank you in advance for all the money you're gonna get us for.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, no, it's, it's my pleasure and, you know, I'm really looking forward to making sure that the municipalities in the 10th district get their fair share early and often. So we're gonna work hard and, but to your point and the police director mentioned it prior, if you have, if you have a good grant writing partnership now, lean on them because they're gonna be vital in all of this. This is a lot of, oh, it's gonna be a lot of grant opportunities. And so if you've got good grant writers, hold on to them because you're gonna really put in the work. And they're just billions and billions of dollars of opportunity. So.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Congressman. So and as you know, at the onset of your introduction, we did say we hope to hear from you and see you again very soon. Councilwoman Castellino has a question or comment?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Congressman, for coming on and like the mayor. You've been very helpful in our district. I, I had the pleasure of having you as our elective official. And so you've always been greatly responsive to us. Just, I will be contacting you. Or as you know, as you just stated earlier, our restaurant owners have been hurt really hard. So I was glad to see that there was more grant opportunities available and we are fortunate enough to have a very good grant writer. So, but they're really got hit hard, especially with this last wave right before Christmas, you know, activity was picking up for them and they just as we all know, have been suffering. So thank, thank you for that information.
That restaurant revitalization pieces is, is, is excellent. So we need to take advantage of it while it's available.
Thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
Great seeing you tonight.
Good seeing all of you.
Please stay safe, Congressman. We will be reaching out again.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We are an hour after our public comment typically starting. I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to start our meeting with public comment. And as the moderator, I know that we had invited the Human Relations Commission on. If you see people from the commission listed, they do have a, an announcement for us. And I would ask that we can hold our council liaison announcements toward the end, if that's okay with everyone. I see heads nodding. Great. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021 and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino.
President.
Councilwoman Matu Brown.
President.
Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams. Council President McCartney. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Madam, Madam Clerk and Madam President, I just had a question. Are we resuming our?
Oh, yeah, the recess meeting.
The recess meeting. Yes, okay. Just for the public to, if, if, if this is your first January meeting, typically the council recesses and does not adjourn their last meeting, which is December 14th because there is some business that still needs to be taken care of and matters that need to be addressed. So right now, what we are opening is reopening is our meeting from December 14th. It is the continuation of that December meeting. And therefore, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, at this time, because the December 14th meeting was in their conference agenda, do we still have a second public meeting? For this reopening of this meeting? For the December 14th meeting?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Councilwoman Supren, I don't, I don't believe there is a requirement for an additional public's, public comment section.
Okay, yes, that, that's what I was asking because we are continuing a meeting that we started December 14th. So for the public, if you can just hang on till we conclude the business of the December 14th meeting, then our new Madam President will open the public portion of the January 4th meeting. So right now, we are going to continue what is on our agenda for the December 14th meeting. Madam Clerks, are there resolutions that are on? And I have a question before we begin with those resolutions. I'm not sure if this is, Mr. Kizer can answer or Mr. Trink can answer. I did have a question with respect to a roll call vote that was taken. Typically, we memorialize those roll call votes. And at the next meeting, not having seen it on this particular agenda, I, I wanted to know if that was something that we had to do was to memorialize. I, I wanted to know if that was something that we had to do was to memorialize that roll call vote that we had once we recessed?
Madam Clerk, I don't, I don't have the agenda for the resumed meeting. All I have is the tonight's new meeting. So I'm hard pressed to answer that question.
Now, on the continuation of December, of the December 14th meeting, there are three resolutions. Transferring current fund appropriations, authorizing emergency appropriation from Hurricane Ida, and authorizing the award of emergency contracts related to Hurricane Ida. I, Councilwoman Matu Brown, I, you have to refresh my memory about a roll call on any vote that we had. I don't have anything like that in my notes.
It was the CDBG, and there was a discussion about the priority list. And the council was going to be, was polled about the, the list itself, the items on the list, two of the items. Specifically, the Community House and the, the, I forget the name of the church, the Joy.
Joy Church of God.
Thank you. So there was a poll taken of the council, but the night of the meeting, we expressed at the meeting at that time that we were going to take a poll. And the resolution was voted on as amended. So now that the poll has been taken and the priority list has been amended or changed, does that have to be memorialized?
It can't hurt to do it. But as I recall, there was, wasn't there a deadline that that had to be at the county? And don't they make the ultimate decision about what funds we're going to receive? And, and I'm not sure if we then have an opportunity to reallocate them or not, but I'm going back to prior year's experience. But my recollection is that the county has a great say in, and Mr. Gross may know better about this and be able to enlighten us about that.
Well, in fact, the county has the ultimate say. The, the expression that was sent to the county from West Orange was based on the roll, the, 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 the roll call vote that was done. And, and that was only to express the, not only, it was to express the West Orange Council's opinion as to what the priorities are. And the county will then take that in, into account when it makes its decision along with what other factors it takes into account. So I think that the fact, the, I think the point is being made is that there was a roll call vote. And it probably is, makes sense for it to be recorded, whether it be on this meeting or another meeting.
Okay, I, I recall that. Just, Mr. Gross, can you explain how the process works after this? What, when the county gets back to us with an award of funds and how, how those funds get allocated?
Yeah, they will, they will make a, they will make a, a decision as to where the funds will be awarded to and to what, what projects. And that will be, you know, the end of this phase of, of this year's CDBG. It really doesn't come back to the council a, a, after this, this point. It'll be whatever the county decides.
So obviously, the reason that I'm asking is because typically it has been the practice of, of of the council that if there is a roll call vote that we do memorialize it and not having seen it, that's why I raised the question. And so if, if what you're saying, Mr. Gross, is that this has already been submitted to the county because there was a deadline, and thank you for reminding me, Mr. Kizer, because I, I do now recall that there was a deadline that was being worked on or worked up against, I recall. That's why we didn't table it. It, there is no point. I was going to ask for a motion to amend that. There was a discussion amongst the council, and I always welcome very spirited discussions amongst the council. And there was reference made to due diligence and, and, and perhaps that I did not do due diligence because I did not contact the pastor myself. However, the due diligence that was done did include reading up on what the requirements were for the community development block grant. And because of what it required, and more importantly, what it did not permit, I was going to ask that we amend that resolution. Since that meeting, I was, I was reading up on two different cases, both here in the state of New Jersey and the Supreme Court of the United States that both overturned cases, one here in Morris County, who provided funds to help restore, if you will, historic churches. And it was a practice, practice that they had had for some time, much like the practice that we have here or have developed in West Orange and not necessarily following what the regulations are for the CBG and CBDG, sorry. And I, I say that because it's something that was mentioned by the mayor the last time he was on in January. And that notwithstanding, just because it's been done that way, doesn't mean it is the right way to do it. So Morris County freeholders were taken to court. It did go up to the State Supreme Court, who reversed and remanded the decision made by the lower courts that upheld the Morris County. At the time, they were freeholders' positions. Since that time, that has been, like I said, taken to the Supreme Court. And I'm sharing this with you, my council colleagues, at this time because I do understand that this has been a practice in the past, and I want us to be very cautious in moving forward that just because it has been a practice, that we don't continue that practice. There are certain regulations that are required, which is why I had the questions that I had for the application of the Joy Church of God. Because there is the religious aid clause versus the free exercise clause that both have been opined by this, like I said, the State Supreme Court and our, our Supreme Court of the United States, that there should be a separation of the activities. So it's not a, I think one of my council colleagues mentioned that there was a, some sort of discriminatory factor that plays in. It's not discriminating outright because it is a religious institution. My questions were specific to what the funds were going to be used for. And even when provided with the breakdown, and I'll, I'll remind you all that after the meeting, Pastor Adams did send us all a breakdown of where the funds were going. Part of that breakdown included a salary or, or a contribution towards a salary. That is specifically not allowed according to case law. So I, I say that because it's what I researched. It's what I've come across in, in the case in Morris County and then the other one in this, in the United States Supreme Court, that when we do due diligence, that we do have to be accountable for it because you're not allowed to either use the funds to rehabilitate a church, which is why I asked about why or where was the status of the permits for the zoning application? And the number of participants, if you will, of the program. Because in that breakdown was also a stipend to participants of $100. That's also not permissible. So I'm sharing this with my council colleagues at this time. And so the public knows I was going to ask for an amendment of that resolution. However, seeing as it has already gone off and it is already too late to do anything about that at this time, moving forward, I'm sharing this with you so that you, you have this in mind. And I'll share the case law with you as well. They are lengthy reads. But I certainly think it's worthwhile for us to engage in them. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just wanted to say, these, I, I, I understand the arguments that you're making now. When we, I didn't refute any of your arguments at the last meeting. I chose to let it go. I let my vote stand for itself. I think it's important that when people make the, and I, I'm not going to get into the details of this particular Joy Church award. I will say that churches, faith-based institutions have been awarded CDBG money in the past, in the state of New Jersey, in the county of Essex, perhaps not in West Orange, but in other areas, especially when they are doing work that reaches difficult to reach communities, when they are advocating on behalf of the neighborhood in which they reside or are domiciled. As pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church, we applied for and was approved for CDBG money in the past. Some of that money was not for the church. Some of it was for planters on the street where the church is and the businesses we partnered with that were in that corridor that needed some help with their front fascia. We partnered with the township, local businesses, and the church to apply for those funds. And we also use them to reach homeless people. So it is not a violation of church and state. The details of the Joy Church application, I, you know, these arguments are new. I don't want to go into them without actually doing a little bit more homework. But the point I want to make is it is wholly appropriate for public-private partnerships. It is wholly appropriate for local government and the faith-based community to work together to meet the needs of the people. And I believe that's exactly what Joy Church is doing. Thank you.
I appreciate that position. It's the same position I had when I spoke about the Bethany Champion for Kids, same situation. My objection is the fact that we do not have anything sustainable to show us where the monies are being spent. And it is our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we know what that is. A textbook is, or copies of a textbook is not a program. A, a, a religious flyer is not a program. I was asking for programmatic substance, something, and I, and I don't know when Bethany applied for it, and I, but I do know that they have it. So I'm not making new arguments. What I'm, what I'm giving you is something for you to look at. And what I said then and what I said back in January, if there are programs, happy to support that because I absolutely understand that that is permissible, but you also have to account for that funding. And that funding cannot be used for religious, the expansion of religious missions. Oh, I'm just going to encompass it that way.
That's not what Joy Church is doing. And I think it's disparaging to even have this kind of a discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, that's, I, I didn't recognize you for the floor, but also it is part of what was given to me and to the rest of us as, as substance for a program. That is not disparaging. It is the truth. I, I didn't write the flyer. I received the flyer. I read the flyer. And it specifically states its, its mission to continue to carry on the love of God. So I'm not making that up. It is not disparaging. It is the truth. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
So I guess, I guess the lesson learned here, which I, I was hoping that we had learned it last year when this came up. And, and again, I know Mr. Lepore wears many hats and he gets his information late, and so he can only give it to us as when he gets it is, is for the administration. And, and Mr. Gross, you're in a different role this year, that we should get this information a lot sooner. This, this way discussions could be had. As far as any entity, it should be a 501(c)(3). That's, you know, Bethany Church became Bethany Center for Champions because I thought this came up a few years back. And so we wouldn't have to be in this position right now with another program being presented to us. Because again, as I said at the last meeting, is, you know, you have all these entities that do great work in our community. And, you know, to Councilwoman's point, I mean, she's doing her due diligence and she's, and, and information that I read, I'm reading this, I'm reading into the same, into what she's reading. So there's, you know, there's always that fine line. And I guess the county will have to decide, because they're, they will grant the, these awards of, of, you know, what falls with the criteria. But I'm, I'm reading the same thing with some information. And again, but it shouldn't, like, it shouldn't be on us as the council. Yes, we approve these, but a little more due diligence needs to be done before, you know, that list gets to us. So we're not put in this position to be, you know, really having to pick apart community organizations who are all trying to do, do good deeds for our community. So, so with that, I hope next year with administration, we, you know, we don't suffer this same situation. Since anybody wants to take notes on that, I'd be, I appreciate, appreciate.
Councilwoman Castellino, we appreciate that because I did have that conversation with the administration going forward. I see Attorney Kizer?
Um, yes, and I, I just want to, I don't want to speak to the substantive issue at all. I really am not qualified to do that at this point, I think. The reason that I asked the questions of Mr. Gross that I did was that there is something in Robert's rules, and you should all be aware of it. Motion to rescind or to amend something previously adopted. But if whatever was adopted can't be undone, then you, you can't use that motion. So, and I don't know, and I wasn't sure what the procedure was. I know we've been through this every year for years. And I, my recollection is that the county makes some fundamental decisions, but that we may have an opportunity after they make those decisions to make readjustments in how money is spent. I may be wrong about that. I don't know. But I just wanted to emphasize that there are procedures out there, but they may not be applicable here because if what, what was enacted is, can't be undone, then end of the game. So.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Councilwoman Matu Brown. I want to thank you for finishing out the December 14th meeting.
We, we have them finished. But that was just, it's not. We're, we're finished with that topic. I mean, I, what, like I said, I was going to, but to Mr. Kizer's point, it's, it's done. It's submitted to the county. And I just shared the research that, that I was reading, and I will pass it on to everyone. Also, just for future references, we.
Future reference.
Yes.
Thank you. And we did, um, so just to say that I did see the final application and a 501(c)(3) has been on file for, for this application.
So the 501(c)(3), it's because they do have a, churches are just recognized. They don't have to file. But the filing that Councilwoman Castellino is talking about is the same filing that Bethany Champion for Kids did. That's the separation and that line that Councilwoman is talking about.
Yes.
But that's not what they have. So that's, I just want to be clear. So Resolution 3, well, let me just ask, because we don't have to go through all of these resolutions unless any of my council colleagues have any questions to Resolution 327, which is the transfer of current funds and appropriations, 328, which is authorizing emergency appropriation to fund expenses from Hurricane Ida, or 329, which is the resolution authorizing the award of emergency contracts related to Hurricane Ida. If any of my council colleagues have anything they want to ask, Councilwoman Williams?
I, I don't have any questions. I'm just going to move for the acceptance of all three resolutions unless there are any objections.
I, I do have questions.
Since they have all been submitted by John Gross, I had already asked him if he would give us a breakdown. So I would ask John to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, the, the three resolutions, the first resolution is transfer resolution, which basically is, is a year-end compilation. We're not allowed to do transfers during the year. We can only do them at the end of the year. And so we were able to go through 2021. And, um, so we were able to go through, uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, which, which is also is impacted by activities in two thousand twenty. Uh, it was a year unlike any other and there, there was a lot more, um, um, I'll say variations, uh, from, from what was anticipated just by the, the near ma- nature of, of, of living through a pandemic, not knowing what that meant, uh, economically. Uh, we fared, uh, relatively well, um, and the, but the, the, the transfers that are in there are reflective of what's necessary in order to, to close out the year. The, the next two, um, resolutions are really related to the hurricane Ida. On top of having a pandemic, we also had a major hurricane storm that caused major damage in the township. Uh, o- o- overall in the, in the area of nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we make, that we anticipate for the most part, uh, will be reimbursed by FEMA or certainly the lion's share of that. Um, the, of that nine hundred thousand dollars, we've already spent to date, uh, approximately, um, six, almost seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, we, we think that there, there is, there is additional, uh, of funds that will be necessary in order to completely recover and get back to the point we were before, uh, the hurricane hit us. Uh, of that seven hundred thousand dollars that has already been spent, nearly half of that is be, is, is, uh, responsible from two seventy-five, uh, Northfield Avenue. And so the other half is from other, other parts of town, um, that, that were heavily impacted. Um, again, we, we hope to see the lion's share of this reimbursed by FEMA. And, uh, that will take some time, so this does have to be funded. And the third, the third contract is just an acknowledgement of the emergency contracts that were let out, uh, based on Hurricane Ida, uh, just to provide transparency as to where these funds are going. So.
And, and just thank you for, for that. Um, it's always good to understand that. I, I specifically wanted you to also talk about the um, funds that are listed in, um, three twenty-nine with respect to the two seventy-five. And you did mention that half of that, uh, of those funds are for, um, for the hotels. What's on here now is about two hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty for the hotels. But I also know that, um, there were additional expenses, um, that the council approved on an emergent basis. So the two, two seventy-three, and just for, um, the public's information, the two hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty that you see is, um, with respect to this part of the balance of the funding, I would imagine, um, Mr. Gross, not the total.
This is, well, this, well, number one, we're not quite done yet.
Yes.
And, uh, no- number two, uh, there, there, for the most part, everything is included there. There may be a couple of sources that are not included on this list, uh, but we try to be as thorough as possible.
And that, and this was in addition to whatever we, whatever the mayor's sunshine fund was able to expend.
Well, the mayor's sunshine fund, uh, is used basically as part of the cash flow to, to pay these bills or, or a portion of these bills, certainly to the extent that we have a twenty-five percent match. Uh, it's, it's for that. Um, you know, this, this is, um, however, it, since, since we have to, um, submit all of our expenses in, in reference to FEMA for, for consideration, uh, everything is included here as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, if there are no questions, Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and?
Is there a motion to approve three twenty-seven twenty-one, three twenty-eight twenty-one, and three twenty-nine twenty-one?
Oh, no.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President McCartney.
Oh, yes. And John, thank you very much. Good news on the FEMA consideration. And thank you for the list accounting for the funds right down to light bulbs. So, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I want to take a moment of personal privilege so we can move on and adjourn. Just wanted to also thank every one of my council colleagues, our administration, Madam Clerk, Madam Moderator, um, our legal department, our financial team. You have been exceptional throughout my time as president. I could not have done, um, a job as I did without all of your assistance. I am truly grateful for the learning experience and to my council colleagues for always having spirited discussions and debates as we should. Thank you very much for, uh, this great year of learning. Um, motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meet, that meeting is adjourned. Uh, I will read the opening statement for the public meeting of January fourth, two thousand twenty-two. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December second, two thousand twenty-one. Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President McCartney.
Present.
The council is now in their public meeting.
And I think it's about time that we start with our public comment.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, everyone, for being so patient. That really was, uh, an education for all of us. Um, and I appreciate our guest speakers. I, and I appreciate our health director staying on if there are any questions that do come up from the public. Again, thank you for your patience.
We have Joe Fagan.
Okay. Welcome, Joe, and thank you for helping me put that, uh, slide presentation together, showing all of the safe outdoor events that we did, that did occur that engaged the community despite COVID.
It is always my pleasure, and I'm sure we missed a lot, uh, but we'll make up for it this year. Uh, thank you, Madam Moder- thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President. I would like to extend best wishes to you for the upcoming year as you begin your services, Council President. Also, well wishes for all your council colleagues and members of the administration as we begin two thousand twenty-two. Of course, I'm Joe Fagan, the Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to address the West Orange public this evening. I would like to begin the new year with an, uh, offer of congratulations to several West Orange police officers. When Officer McClellan arrived home on Christmas Eve at the end of his shift, he heard cries for help coming from his neighbor's upstairs apartment. He responded only to find the occupant's daughter, who said she had not heard from her father inside the apartment and that he suffers from a heart condition. Officer McClellan found his neighbor unresponsive and not breathing with no pulse. With the assistance of his wife, he began life-saving CPR. Police officers Pau, Paglucia, Persercio, and Smeraldo quickly arrived on scene and also began life-saving efforts. Due to the immediate actions of all the officers and the utilization of CPR, the pulse was regained and the patient began breathing on his own. Units from the West Orange Fire Department subsequently arrived on scene and transported the patient to St. Barnum's Medical Center for further treatment. This is a stark reminder of the heroic and life-saving efforts of all the men and women of our police and fire departments who stand ready to answer the call to duty as they continue to keep our community safe and protected. As we move past the holiday season, Christmas tree pickup, pickup begins tomorrow, January fifth, by the Department of Public Works. Residents can place their discarded Christmas trees at the curb so that it can be recycled. Call for pickup at nine seven three, three two five, four oh six seven, or email publicworks@westorange.org and inform the DPW that your tree has been placed at the curb. This information is also on our website. Please be reminded that trees must be free and clean of any decorations and ornaments and not placed in a plastic bag. After January ninth, trees will be picked up with your regular trash. Trees can also be brought to the Environmental Center at five ninety Mount Pleasant Avenue for disposal anytime during regular business hours. That's all I have this evening, Madam President, and would like to wish everyone a happy new year. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Joe Fagan. Thank you, Joe. That was, thank you for the good news, but it was also a stark reminder that I forgot to ask the chief when he was on if he would be able to give us a status on Officer Hernandez.
So I speak with, uh, Officer Hernandez, and that is initially every day, and now, you know, I'm trying to space it out a little bit. So it's probably been two days since I've spoken with him. I'll talk, call him again tomorrow, but, uh, he's coming along well. Um, banged his knee up quite a bit and, uh, needs to have that looked at by orthopedist and MRI and et cetera. So he's not quite back to duty yet. But, um, you know, he seems like he's handling what occurred well and, you know, by the grace of God, he, uh, he survived that and, uh, his heroic efforts may have likely saved the life of the other individual that was in the store that was being confronted by the assailant. The, uh, I think, things, things worked out, uh, well in the end. So, uh, once again, you know, I, I, I think Chris and I know I certainly thank God for that.
Yes, we all do. And please, when you speak to him again, send him our, our thoughts and prayers have been with him ever since. Thank you.
Next member of the public is Frank Bellisteri. Frank, state your name and address for the record.
My name's, uh, Frank Bellisteri. Um, my councilor, two seven five St. Cloud Avenue.
Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Town Council. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you to the Town Council and congratulate, congratulate, um, congratulations to Council President Susan McCartney.
Thank you.
I hope you all, I hope you all had, had happy and healthy holidays. I wanted to let everyone on the council know that I appreciate your support and your warm words that were said. I believe it was two, two meetings ago. I thank you and appreciate you. Like I said before, my name is Frank Bellisteri, and I am one of the seven firefighters who have been held out of work on unpaid leave since October fifteenth. To say times are tough is an understatement for us seven and our large families. I would do anything for my family because they are my world. I tell my eight-year-old, my six-year-old, and my three-year-old boys that life is, is sometimes going to throw you curveballs, but you have to stay positive and stay true to yourselves. I tell them that their father is still a firefighter. And a couple of unreasonable people are not going to change the mindset of a firefighter. Firefighters don't care about someone's vaccination status, their political affiliation, or what their gender or race is. It does not matter. Firefighters will always help someone in need. I'm sure there are people online who have said that we have a choice to get vaccinated and a choice to get, to get a new job because of not getting it. I know these people are not firefighters because a firefighter would never say that. Firefighters do not have a choice to enter a building on fire to save someone, someone's life. Firefighters don't have a choice to perform CPR on someone in need, whether or not they are vaccinated. It doesn't matter. We swore to this and willingly put our lives at risk. But everybody is entitled to have an opinion and I respect that. My question tonight is to John Gross directly. And my question is why are you so hell-bent on trying to ruin seven people's lives? Why are we not back to work in a time of need? The township needs healthy firefighters. Can you explain this to the public? Vaccinated firefighters are nee- are needing to go out sick and quarantine, leaving the department undermanned and firefighters overworked. I believe the number is twenty-five double-vaxxed firefighters at the time. Firefighters are unwillingly being held over to staff the minimum manpower. This means overtime is usually a choice, and when you get held over, you are being ordered to stay. The seven of us have always been willing to test, but have never been given that opportunity. Why have, have we been rejected? Being if we were to be tested prior to our workday, we would be the safest employees at the firehouse. Because you have no policy in place for any other employee to be tested. If people are tested before their shift, then there is no question about who has it. Four days before Christmas, the township rejected an offer for us to come, to get weekly tested and to come back and serve the town that we love. It was rejected. Neighboring towns all have testing policies, but West Orange doesn't. The President of the United States and Dr. Fauci have stated that even being vaccinated, you could still con- contract and transmit the virus. Vaccines lessen the severity of illness, which should be the choice of the person to receive it. Why isn't everyone getting tested if, i- if that is the safest way? It upsets me to even have to make statements like this, but I have an obligation to my family to have answers. You have already taken away the ability for me to provide for my fa- family. So after sixteen years of giving my life to this town, I believe the seven of us deserve an honest response. You have an obligation to this town the same way we do when we are on duty. If testing seven healthy firefighters is going to make the town safer by providing more manpower, cutting down overtime, and providing relief to fellow firefighters, then why aren't we back to work? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank.
Next up is Frank Noborian. Noborian, sorry.
Noborini.
Frank, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Frank Noborini, thirty Robertson Road. Um, I'm also the president of the Fire Officers, FMBA Local two hundred twenty-eight. Uh, I'm going to try to echo, uh, what Frank had just said, uh, but I don't know if I could do a better job. We don't get to pick who we want to help or when we want to help. We just go. And, um, you know, it's a little sad to even hear him have to defend that. Uh, it's been seventy-four days since seven firefighters were granted exemptions from the COVID, uh, vaccine mandate. There, they were ordered no longer to report to work and they've been denied pay ever since. Several weeks ago, uh, you heard from Frank before, and, uh, he, he asked that you guys implore the township administration to consider a testing option. Uh, it took several weeks after that and the township finally came. Uh, and since then, the seven firefighters and the two fire unions have been working hard to get an agreement done with the township. And, uh, as Frank said, uh, December twenty-second, the week of Christmas, the week of Christmas, the township decided to withdraw that, that testing option. I find it hard to even consider that the township would, um, would do this, uh, the week of Christmas, knowing that these firefighters have gone months, months without a check during the holidays with young kids to provide for. Um, I, I, I find it, uh, unconscionable and really disheartening. Um, you know, obviously with the spread of the latest variant of COVID, it's become clear that it is not only the unvaccinated that spread it. Um, it is apparent through my own experiences as well as watching the numbers rise at work, uh, in, in the community that vaccinated, uh, personnel can and do spread, uh, COVID. Even, even employees or even residents that have become fully vaccinated and with boosters. Uh, we do not take the, the, uh, cases, the case, uh, rise of COVID lightly. Uh, we know how bad of an impact that has on the township and we see it day to day. So we do not take this lightly when we say this, but we are only highlighting an area in which the township has said that these seven pose a danger. And we know now that that's not the case. Those seven pose no more of a danger than myself or any other fellow firefighter who's been fully vaccinated. Um, it's with this that I ask you again to implore the township to come back to the negotiating table. Oh, allow these seven firefighters to come back and do a job they love, a job that we all desperately need them to do. Um, Council President, before the meeting, you showed a year review and highlighted, um, you know, some events throughout the town, uh, last year. One of those events was a two-hundred club honoring, uh, firefighters that, uh, performed a rescue on two eighty. Uh, one of those firefighters, uh, pulled out two critically injured firefighters. Uh, two guys that unfortunately probably will never work again, um, seriously injured. Seriously injured, didn't hesitate with the dump truck on fire next to him. He ran up and, and pulled those two, including a trooper, out of the mangled ambulance. Unfortunately, he's on unpaid leave right now. And he won't be there to pull me out of a mangled ambulance or, or structured fire and he won't be there for the residents. And when I say we desperately need people like him back, we do. And we can't put a value on someone like him and his actions and what he represents. Again, I implore you to use all the influence and authority you have as council members to bring the township back to the negotiating table. Allow these guys to come back to work. That's all they want. That's all they've ever wanted and that's all we want for them. As always, thank you for your time and consideration and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. Next up is Claire Silvestri. Claire, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Claire Silvestri, excuse me, twenty Grandview Avenue. Good evening, Happy New Year. Congratulations, Council President McCartney. I just want to express my support for the reinstatement of Mr. Bellistieri and the other firefighters. I believe they make a very strong case and that the community really needs them at this point. I also wanted to speak about something I see on the agenda for this evening. An ordinance on first reading number two six seven five dash twenty two. That has to do with setting up always stop sign intersections on several through streets in the St. Cloud section of town. I don't have any objection to the changes to the ordinance. But I would like to take this opportunity to ask why the intersections of Cobain Terrace and Grandview and Bradford Avenues have repeatedly been denied a similar change in their traffic pattern. Cobain Terrace is a main through street in the Upper Gregory section that is adjacent to Roosevelt Middle School Athletic Field. And it's a street on which many students walk to and from school every day. Also, quite a number of Cobain residents have small children who ride bikes and play on their front lawns on the street. The consistent speeding by vehicles on that street is a very concerning issue. If there ever was a street that would benefit from always stops on its two intersecting streets, it is Cobain Terrace. Yet, instead of going that route, the township has recently installed expensive solar powered lighted stop signs on Grandview and Bradford Avenues and a northbound and southbound speed limit detector on Cobain near the Grandview Avenue intersection. So rather than forcing cars to stop at the intersection of Grandview and then again at Bradford, which would definitely slow the speed of cars proceeding to the end of the street. These high tech speed limit signs at best get cars to slow down for a few brief seconds while they see the sign before accelerating once they've passed it. Or worse, are totally ignored by drivers going ten to twenty miles over the posted speed limit. I regularly walk my dog on Cobain Terrace and I've witnessed just that kind of behavior a number of times in the past few weeks. So I really would appreciate an explanation from the administration. I don't know if Mr. Lepore is on the call tonight, but someone from the administration as to why Fairview, Edgewood, Rock Spring Avenues and Old Indian Road qualify for always stops. But Cobain Terrace does not. I believe the township has spent a lot of taxpayer money on that street, but hasn't solved a really important problem. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Claire. Madam Moderator?
Yes. Any other members of the public before we go to Anthony Puglisi? I'm not seeing any. Go ahead, Anthony Puglisi.
Welcome, Anthony.
There, there was one more. I'm sorry, somebody named Mark. We can go to Anthony and then go back to Mark. Is that okay?
Sure. Thank you, Anthony.
Okay, thank you. Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Just wanted to follow up on some questions that were asked earlier in the meeting.
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. He probably didn't realize he couldn't.
Oh, yeah.
Anthony, can you hear me?
I just unmuted again. Can you hear me?
We can. Anthony, can you start again, please? We had a little technical.
Sure. No problem. So I just, this is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I just wanted to circle back to a couple of questions that were posed earlier in your meeting. Your Health Director, Joe Fonzino, did a great job encapsulating everything that was going on at our vaccination and testing sites. There was one question of whether we had shortened the allocated time after getting a second dose and a booster dose. Our sites, we are still following the CDC guideline that says six months after second doses to get a booster shot of Pfizer or Moderna. Again, like Director Fonzino said, that information may change in the coming days or hours. But at this moment, we're, we're still following the six month rule. You also has a couple of questions about CDPG funding. I did get a chance to email our, one of our housing officials and I'm gonna just read a couple of things that he sent to me in the, in an email. One, even though you may have sent your priorities to us, there is still some time, still some time if you would like to change that priority list. And you should probably make any changes before the end of January. Because the, the real process of identifying projects to be funded begins in February. So January, January would be the latest you could make any change. Second, regarding the church, I'm unfamiliar with what was submitted. But what our, one of our housing officers said was, they also had been researching this issue regarding churches. And let me read, let me read what he writes. Regarding the church, we recently researched this topic and it appears we may award a grant to a church for carrying out an eligible activity that we believe is assisting the community such as a food pantry, counseling, daycare, et cetera. As stated in HUD regulations, a church should be viewed as any other agency and not be discounted because it is a church. That being said, they cannot allocate funds to renovate a church for its parishioners or finance a program designed to further the faith. So I hope that kind of provides some clarity to the questions that were posed there. Finally, January is usually when we begin our deer management program in South Mountain Reservation. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic for the second consecutive year, we are gonna cancel that program. And hopefully, things will improve next year where we can carry it out again. That's all that I have tonight. If anyone has any questions, I will be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anthony.
Okay. We have Marcus back.
Okay, good.
Mark, state your name and address for the record. He's muted. He needs to unmute.
Okay, Mark, please unmute so we can hear your question or comment.
I did. Oh, there it is. Okay.
There you go. Okay.
I'm not sure if this is the right moment or time, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's any new information on the cannabis situation in West Orange.
All right, Mark, I'm going to ask you to tell us your last name and your address, please.
I, oh, you didn't hear that. Okay, Mark Chase, one ten Eagle Ridge Way, West Orange.
Okay, ask your question.
Oh, yeah, his question was any updates on the cannabis?
Yes. And how would I find out all the information that West Orange would have? Cause I'm, I'm applying for, with Trenton and I know you guys are taking applications once you get the approval from Trenton. So I'd like to know what the process would be at the moment.
Okay, Mark, if you could hold on for a couple of more minutes, we're going to close our public comment and then we will answer questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Moderator?
Any other members of the public wish to speak? I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Thank you. We'll close out public comment at this time. And I, I am going to start with Frank Bellistieri and Frank Noborini and their heartfelt comments. I did respond to the letter from the firefighters at the end of the year. I was under the impression that testing was, I know we advocated, I advocated for testing and reasonable accommodations during our previous council meeting. And I am a little surprised right now to hear that testing option was withdrawn. So I am going to ask the business administrator to comment and explain, please.
Sure. First off, I, I want to make clear that I think we all, we all are really very upset and that, that we are where we are and that we're not in a situation where we have not just seven firefighters, but we have fourteen West Orange employees who are on, on leave right now because of, of the vaccination policy that, that we have in place. We, we did, first of all, this is, this is a matter of negotiations, labor negotiation. So I want to be very careful with my words so that I, I don't certainly violate and, and create an unfair labor practice. But I, but I do want to first express, I think that we're all heartbroken about this and no, no one wants wants to see this continue any longer than it's absolutely necessary. And, and the, the council did refer this to, to the administration and their, their concerns about offering a testing option. And as Mr. Noborini indicated, we certainly did. And we put a, a testing option on the table for consideration. Unfortunately, we weren't able to consummate an agreement that, 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 that we had hoped based on, on that. The, the, the nature of, of labor negotiation is such that it, it's a long process and, and I may correct one thing that Mr. Noborini said. We have not walked away from the table. We will continue to negotiate and discuss alternatives with them. But we did, you know, we're, we're at a point where we felt that we needed to make a decision as far as how to move forward with, with the negotiations and that's where we are. So, so we're not going to negotiate in public. And, and certainly to the council, we'll, we'll provide you with any information that you would like. But I assure you that it's the position of the mayor and the administration that we want to get these employees back as quickly as we can possibly do. And however, there, there are you know, requirements within the policies and the, and the, the risks involved with that. So while we're not going to discuss all of that here publicly tonight, because again, I, I don't want to run the risk of creating an unfair labor practice. I just want to assure you and them that, that this is, this is a high priority for us. We've put a lot of energy and time and continue to do so to try to come up with some, with solutions. Obviously, we haven't come up with solutions that are agreeable to both parties. But that remains a goal for us.
So thank you for the assurance that the negotiations are still underway. Do we have a timeline for these negotiations? You're saying that they take a long time, but is there a way to expedite and?
Well, it, it, it takes time for parties to come and this, these are, and I'll, I'll just say these are more complicated negotiations by the nature of it, the way it, it's played out. But I, I, I will tell you that we have the utmost respect for all of these employees and our labor, our, our those that are negotiating for the unions themselves, Mr. Noborini and, and, and for the firefighters. Angelo Tedesco. And to the extent that, that Mr. Noborini expressed to you tonight that he felt that, that the township had walked away from the table. We're certainly going to reach out and, and, and correct that notion. We, we, we think that we've been clear in, in all of our correspondence that we stand willing to continue the discussion. But we will make sure that that's the case.
Thank you very much. Anyone have a comment on that? Thank you. Claire Silvestri made a comment about, yes, the LED light at the base of Grandview Avenue. There have been quite a few studies done on Cobain. Lenny Lepore is our town engineer is on the call right now and Lenny, if you can explain what decision was made and why, can you explain why would Cobain qualify for more stop signs along the way since it is a direct route to Roosevelt Middle School into Gregory for that matter?
Well, what I'd like to do, even though we're not on the ordinance section of, of the agenda, is to say what we did at the three intersections. There are criteria in the manual on uniform traffic devices for how you specify all way stops. There are very specific criteria and then there are subjective criteria. So what was done here at these three intersections, we looked at traffic volumes, looked at turning movements at the intersections and also looked at site distance restrictions. And at all three of the intersections that are on tonight's agenda, came to the conclusion that there are site distance restrictions, which would be in the interest of safe movement and efficient movement of traffic to designate those three intersections as always stop intersections. I don't see those same conditions being present at Cobain Terrace and Bradford Avenue, Cobain Terrace and Grandview Avenue. But I can certainly go back and, and look at them and do, do some traffics, further traffic studies there comparable to what we did at the three that are before tonight's council meeting.
Thank you. Anthony, thank you for your comments also on or clarifying how the county is following CDC guidelines at this time about the CDPG priority list. We have until the end of January, the county will determine about the eligibility of the program. I, I thank you for looking at that. If you have information that you can share with us, I would appreciate it. And Mr. Chase, so tomorrow night, we do have a task force that has formed on the cannabis ordinance. And tomorrow night, that ordinance, it will be before the planning board to review and make recommendations to the council. I could invite you to through online, westorange.org to look for the agenda. And June meeting tomorrow evening will be a virtual meeting at seven thirty. If you do have any questions or comments that you would like to make. I did ask Councilwoman Matu Brown that if she has any minutes or information that have been published from the task force to share with council colleagues. So I would like to see that information as well, particularly before tomorrow night's meeting. Thank you. Anyone else here to comment? Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Thank you. I'll start with Mark since he was the last one who spoke. Mark, as, as Councilwoman, Council President McCartney stated, it is before, an amendment is before the planning board to consider the distance of, from schools or buildings that are owned by the Board of Ed. However, there are four license categories that are permissible in the township. And so that's what's before the, the planning board on tomorrow. Currently, what has been released by the state are the applications for cultivation. So if, if that is your interest, I would certainly ask you to shoot me an email and I'll provide you with a copy of the ordinance if you're not able to find it on the with a copy of the ordinance. If you're not able to find it on the website, happy to do that. We do not have a place on the township website as of yet, but we are working. We're actually discussing that tomorrow with the administration on where it's going to be housed so that we can put up our agenda, our minutes and our meetings because they are recorded. If you go on social media, YouTube or just Google the West Orange Cannabis Task Force, I'm sure you will come across those videos as well. But that's where we are. We do have a draft application. And once we determine how and where the request for applications will be housed on our website, then then you can start requesting those applications. I, I hope after our meeting, we're able to expedite how that, how that all rolls out. But the task force is going to be scheduling another meeting shortly and happy to make sure that every, that it's on, it is posted on the website. Typically, if you go to the events calendar page, it's not always on the top. But sometimes when it's posted, it's posted way at the bottom, all the information on the calendar. So just look there as well for any upcoming meetings. Mr. Puglisi, thank you for your updates and information. It's, it's where I was going with the permitted uses. So thanks for that clarification. Ms. Sylvesteri, I do understand your requests and support for our firefighters. As it was stated earlier, the council did advocate for the administration to go back to the table to negotiate some options for our fire, police and non-uniform who are not on the job. And I am happy that the municipality has gone back to the table. And as stated by Mr. Gross, it is up for, they're still negotiating, so I can't really comment further. I, I do support them returning to work sooner than later and hope that they're able to work things out. And expedite that working things out. Mr. Lapore responded to your questions with respect to the, the four-way stop. Mr. Norbarini, I have not had the opportunity to speak with you, but I thank you for coming on and sharing your, your statements and your passion as well as Frank Bellistieri. I did speak to Angelo Tedesco a couple of days ago and was updated. So thank you for sharing your perspectives on that as well. Hope that there is a speedy resolution and you're able to come back to work. Because you are certainly needed and missed, I am sure. That's it for me, council president.
Councilwoman, thank you very much for your insight on cannabis. I appreciate that. And just not only for Mr. Chase, but for all of our residents that are tuning in. If you would like to reach the council, it's council as in assembly, not council as in law. C O U N C I L at westorange.org if you would like to reach us collectively. Thank you. Council, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, council president. Just for clarity, are we, are we going, is it, are we raising our hand in order to respond to public comment or are we going to do it in order or how are we going to do that?
A hand went up and it caught my attention. Yeah, that was just, we probably will go back to alphabetical order or it just, it caught my eye.
No, got it. Yep. All right. Thank you. So to Mr. Fagan, Mr. Puglisi, as always, thank you guys for your continued updates. Mr. Puglisi, in particular, with regard to the CDBG funds. And I think what he meant, what, what he was saying in the furtherance of the religious activity, you can't use CDBG money to proselytize, to try to recruit people to your faith or to teach your faith or to worship. And so I think that's, that's a layman's kind of a explanation of that. And I do appreciate his prompt response to Mr. Bellistieri and Mr. Nobarini. You know, I have already made my position on this known. I think the council has been very firm in how we perceive this particular situation. I know that it is a labor matter. It is outside of our purview. We don't have the authority or power to make those changes. But I do encourage the administration to, to revisit where we are. I can't imagine 74 days without a paycheck. Certainly not at Christmas time. It has, it has, it has certainly caused me some, some concern. I've expressed that publicly and privately. I said this before and I'll say it here, I think with regard to police, fire and EMT, because they risk their lives for us, we have to treat them a certain way. I am supportive of everyone getting vaccinated and boosted. I, I wouldn't, I tonight encourage the administration to consider an indoor mask mandate. I recognize how serious COVID is. I have lost countless people to the disease so far. So I, I take it very seriously. I also recognize that some folks are not going to get vaccinated for whatever reason. Most of those reasons are good. Some of them are not. In spite of that, we have a job to do as in government. And it is incumbent upon us to take the high road and to get that job done. So I know this is not comfortable for either the mayor or new BA, CFO chief operating officer or any in the administration. And I don't usually speak like this in these meetings. At least I try not to. But this matter, it has to come to an end. We have to find a way out. There has to be some middle ground. And all of us have to find a way to make a little bit of a sacrifice to get there. You know, I've been trying to be careful so I don't get us in any further trouble or open the door for any legal issues. But I, I could not sit here and not respond, given that heartfelt public statement by Mr. Bellistieri. I think the other issues have been adequately addressed from Mr. Chase and from Ms. Sylvesteri. And so I think that will end. I think that will end my public comment. Thank you, council president.
Thank you, councilman. Councilwoman Williams or Catalino, since we are not going in alphabetical order. I see a wave. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, council president. Just wanted to thank everyone for tuning in to our first meeting this evening of the new year. Would like to certainly wish everyone a happy new year and thank Mr. Fagan as well as Mr. Puglisi for coming in and giving us township as well as county information. Certainly am in agreement with my council colleagues and encouraging strongly hopeful that our administration will reconcile and be able to put a plan together that both parties will find agreeable so that our seven firefighters can get back to work sooner than later. So I am confident that our administration is working diligently. I know that sometimes often in negotiations, there does seem to be information that may not be moved along the line. And everyone may not be privileged to. But I do have confidence that our administration does want to see some resolution so that all parties can get back to work in the most helpful, helpful means possible. I think everything else has certainly been addressed. I will not belabor public comment and my responses to that. So thank you, council president.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Catalina.
Thank you, council president. So Mr. Chase, I appreciate my colleague, Councilwoman Two Brown. She's been doing a great job leading the cannabis task force. I serve on it as, as I stated previously, it's going before the planning board tomorrow night. You know, one of my, my concerns was how far away from a school or church that will be placing these locations. So all that will be vet, all that has yet to be vetted out. So, but I do appreciate my colleagues' hard work and, and I know she'll get everything. I think things have been circulated already and she's been posting along the way. So we look forward to that moving along. Mr. Fagan, beginning of the evening, you started out with recognizing our brave officers. I want to thank them and our firefighters for always coming to the rescue of our community. And, and I, I want to thank all them because this holiday season has been really, really rough with so many forms of COVID. And so we heard earlier how many, you know, folks were out sick and how everybody's working overtime and everybody's doing their part. So when we have our two officer or two firefighters come on this evening, I, I do have to briefly comment because it just breaks my heart that we're here. And I appreciate Mr. Gross's comments tonight. I, I know he really feels bad about the situation. It's unfortunate we are here. I was, I've been against any kind of mandate from, from the beginning. I am pro getting one to vax and, and encouraging everyone to get vaccinated. But we're going to year three of this pandemic and, you know, there's still, you know, this was a rough patch this past month. I, I still have lingering facts. I, I was alone on Christmas without my children and my family because I, I felt ill, even though I am vaccinated and I passed along to my husband. So I'm a vax person passing it to a vaccinated person. And you know, the messaging continues to be confusing. You know, the data that comes out continues to be confusing and very frustrating because we're, we're still not there. And it's here we are starting 2022, you know, a year ago, I, I, you know, I sat there. It's going to be in two days, a year, I, I, my mother passed. We've had a funeral for my mom from COVID and, and here we are still sitting here as council. And Rutherford, you know, expressed, you know, with many, losing many friends and family and it's, it's, it's really hard. And for those who aren't vaccinated, you know, I, I continue to encourage folks. I know everyone has their reasons, but I have to tell you, I was really sick. I didn't have the quick Omnicron. I, I think I might've had the Delta severe pains and a lot of pain. And all I kept thinking was, thank God I was vaccinated because I would, would have been sicker. I would have been sick and maybe could have, could have been in worse shape in the hospital. So we just keep encouraging people. But at the same time, I strongly do believe we shouldn't have started a mandate. We should have went to encouragement. Neither say that there. I know the administration has been trying to negotiate this. Negotiations are always hard and negotiation takes both sides. So as I feel for our officers and, and really, and their families, and this is horrible times. I urge both sides to continue to move forward to get this done because this is just heartbreaking that, that we're here. And Mr. Puglisi, I want to comment, the county, I have to say, my husband went and up to Kmart because I, I couldn't move and he brought home a test and brought it back for me. And, and once again, I can't, I can't express my gratitude for all that the county does for our township and our residents time after time. My only regret this holiday season, other than getting sick, was I, I wanted to get over to see the zoo again this year and I didn't make it and then I felt ill. But that also brought such joy to so many families through these horrible, horrible times. So again, we want to thank you for all that you do. All our parents out there, we feel for you. I know the superintendent and our school board colleagues, this has been really tough times. I know people, there's high frustrations with, you know, no school yesterday and half days this week. But they're really trying hard to do the best to keep everyone safe, to recognize that our, our parents or working parents have to survive. And just, you know, next couple of weeks, hopefully it doesn't last long this way. But everyone needs to be patient and all work together. And I just want to put one last plug in this evening is to, don't forget to, and everybody's been so, so generous this past year. But the food pantry, if you're healthy and you have time to help volunteer at Holy Trinity, please reach out to Cynthia Cummings and always too, you could donate at the Mayor Sunshine Fund. Because with helping the residents at 275 Northfield this past, this past fall, which was def needed, and that's why we have the sunshine fund. You know, it's, it's pretty much depleted and there's more need in our community as we move forward to this new year. So thank you, council president, and congratulations and good, good, good luck navigating us through another tough winter.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catalina, and I hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
I do want to ask our moderator that I do know that members of the Human Relations Commission were on our call. I believe they had other commitments and had to drop off, but I'm wondering if they did leave a flyer that we could make an announcement for them.
Yes, yes, they did. It's right here.
There we go. All right. So again, it's still virtual, carrying on the conversation that we've had all evening. Monday, January 17th at 10:00 AM, information will be posted on the town website. It will be a Zoom link from 10 to 12. So we thank the Human Relations Commission for putting this together each year and for the inspiration that we all receive from it again each year. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Okay, we're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, December 14th, 2021.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, there are no bills. Resolutions or any resolutions being pulled this evening? I know that resolution 4-22, the resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with higher accrual and associates is being pulled by the administration. Being tabled, removed, sorry, not pulled.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for you had that conversation. I had that conversation with the administration earlier. Today, we will revisit that subject soon. I was going to, I, I'm really going to ask the moderator that we are going to pull resolution 822 for a public hearing on the adoption of the downtown West Orange Alliance Special Improvement District's budget. Since, since Megan is juggling and was able to put this budget together for our presentation, I would ask that we move that forward and have that presentation so that she can go back to literally the job at hand. Do you want to make a motion to move that up to our agenda? Or is there any other resolutions? Are there any other resolutions that need to be pulled? I, Councilwoman Williams or Councilwoman Rutherford? No, all right. Good. Great. Thank you.
So you've got a count. Council President, are you, are you going to move forward with the consent agenda then?
Oh, that's, yeah, apparently we just did, Madam Clerk, if you could.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, no. Second.
I'm sorry, all in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Congratulations, Mr. Gross.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
I think we're in great hands.
Mad, Madam President, well, this can happen after. Sorry, I'll circle back.
No, I was agreeing with the sentiment of John. I'm waiting for Megan. We'll have to put up the screen for her budget so we can go through the downtown West Orange Alliance budget.
Okay, great.
While she's doing, while she's doing that though, Councilwoman Matu Brown, if you have.
Thank you. I, I just for the benefit of the public, since everyone just congratulated Mr. Gross and Mr. Gross, congratulations. I've always expressed to you initially. I I've always expressed to you initially how challenging our relationship was when we first started working together, but I've grown and learned just how smart of a man you are. Reading your curriculum vitae is quite impressive. But I've learned a lot from you and I thank you. But also wanted to, just for the benefit of the public, if you can briefly just tell the public who's going to assume your responsibilities. I don't know if everyone's familiar with Nick, who is already in your office, if you can just briefly say that.
Yeah, we 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 have a very talented staff. And so we, one of the things that that I've been working towards uh i- is is some succession planning, if you will, anyway. And so we we've been trying to do a lot of cross-training to make sure that as thing, as as we move on in in life and and experiences that we we leave some of that behind for the people that are there now and going to be there later on. So Nick in my office, who you've all met during the meet, during the budget process, uh has been working hard and and he's a talented young man and we're very fortunate to have him. In addition to that, we've also reached out and to get some redundancy. She knows for, in in order to make sure that we have people that are available to handle the day-to-day events should something crazy happen. We need, so we we've got some consultants that we've been working with to to bring in to become more familiar with our operations on an emergent basis, as well as to provide any guidance they can coming from a different different venues, whether they be county or municipal. So we're, we're, we're putting together a, 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 a team to absorb some of my my day-to-day responsibilities, uh as well as to create the necessary redundancy should, should it become necessary. I was, I was always the redundant part of, of, of a lot of the operations since I created most of them and and formulated them. It was logical for me to do that. Uh in my new role, there's going to be, is a need for for others to have, be able to take, pick up that role, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, thank you. You're most welcome.
And and if if I can, while while we're waiting for for Megan, if I could express my personal thanks to Mayor Parisi and and to to each and every one of you for the trust and the responsibility that that you've placed in my hands. I make a promise to you and and to to Mayor Parisi and to Jack Sayers, whose, whose footprints I will surely follow and who, and in whose shoes I'll likely never be able to fill. I will, I will work and strive every day to make sure that that we all focus not just on getting things done, but getting the right things done. I think the residents of West Orange deserve no less and I I appreciate the the council's confidence in in allowing me to be part of that moving forward. So thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for your vow. Oh, Councilwoman Castellino.
And while we have the time, while Ms. Brill's setting up, I I I just want to share with the public as council, um it's Councilwoman and meant briefly had mentioned your resume. And and not only have you served for us as Chief Financial Officer, but in other towns as well, you also have served in the business administrator capacity uh in another township and as well as for a form, another Board of Education in in your years past. So your vast experience is is definitely has always been beneficial to to with all my questions that I've always had for you and and especially with this new role for us moving forward, so. Forward to to seeing you thrive in this role, Mr. Gross.
Thanks, woman Castellino. I would tell you to keep reading because there's also a mayor listed on there.
Yeah, I I I pretty much have been in every, every I I was an at public advocate, I go in advocacy for for particular issues. I I I've done the gamut. But I, you know, I served as business administrator in Neptune Township for five years. I was administrator CFO in South Orange for 14 years. And and certainly my role with West Orange for the last 10 years as Chief Financial Officer, but also in administrative capacity as well. You know, the 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 business of government is is my business and I'm I'm really, really, really pleased as I I I came to West Orange for a lot of reasons, but not the least, which is it's just a wonderful town and to be involved in, already my experience here has been terrific uh and 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 very rewarding for me. And I, and I think moving forward again to 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 pick up Jack's legacy and 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 just try to keep that going as best I can. It just means a lot to me, so thank you.
Where does the pharmacist fit in?
Well, you know, everybody, everybody asks, how did that happen? But when I was, when I was but a mere child, I was the delivery guy for for a pharmacy. First, I was walking him and then I was driving him and and they convinced me that I was, I, no one in my family had ever been gone to college. My, my, my dad was a steam fitter, my brother was a steam fitter, and I was expected to be and but I chose a different course and went to college and went to pharmacy school and 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 where frankly, that's where I learned how to think. You know, the, I'll, I'll thank, you know, my science background for learning, you know, how to understand complicated situations and 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 make sense out of it. And then I had an opportunity, got involved in 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 my hometown oh, in 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 Monmouth County. Like as as Councilwoman Castellino said, I I I was on the Board of Education, Vice President of the Board of Education and then got involved in some community issues and then I was on the Township Committee and then mayor and and had an opportunity to to, I was asked if I would consider being a business administrator. And I said, yeah, let's give it a shot. And and God, I I just loved it. As I always say, welcome, I, welcome to the dark side, you know, I I I, I, I loved it and and I've, I've done nothing else since then. And that was 30 years ago, so.
Well, thank you for bringing that broad spectrum with you here to West Orange. We certainly have learned to appreciate it. Yeah, Megan, how are we doing?
Okay. I was just testing you guys.
I see.
All right, so we can just dive right in. The presentation's only about 10 or 15 minutes and then whatever questions y'all have, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay. So this is our budget. Just to reiterate, I know that on, I probably haven't talked about this in a while. We have the four different districts within the downtown and we associate them with different colors. So whenever you see these circles or the banners, those are Tory Corner, St. Mark's, Eagle Rock and the Valley. Um, our budget is not very different than last year's budget. There is an increase of about $17,000 and that is in the marketing and promotion line item. Oh, I I'm sorry, Ron Raymond and some members of our board are on watching. They were trying to hang in with us. Ron has just got back from extended holiday. So he is here and, um, you know, they wish you well and hope that you vote yes. If they could speak. So getting back to our budget, um, the promotional line, if you look at the, um, budget versus actual, that's where the extra 17,000 is in. We've allocated that within the promotion and marketing line item. The, um, the driving forces in the budget are, um, are twofold. The, um, we should reiterate that we are, you know, one staff person, the executive director. We put an administrative assistant in the budget two years ago and, um, and COVID hit and everybody was a little squirrely about, um, you know, being next to one another and the buildings closed, so um, my office is not that big. You can see my office in the background. So we never, um, we, you know, got a couple of resumes and we never moved forward with that. So we're hoping to be able to figure that out for this year and be able to get an administrative person on board to help with a lot of the responding to emails and organizing of data and, you know, all the stuff that kind of keeps me stuck in the office. To reiterate our board, we have an 11-member Board of Trustees. There are volunteer board. We have six appointed positions. Each one of the council has an appointment and the mayor gets an appointment on our board. And we have the council liaison, which is Councilwoman Castellino this year. We also have four elected positions at large and those tend to be resident or property owners or or business owners. And we have a new B coming on, Alex, the owner of the light bulb cafe shop. So we're excited to have him on board. So those four will stay on board for the next four years and then we uh reelect them after that. The, um, the other issue that, um, I think is important is that our assessment amount, the 133,000, that remains the same as last year. So we are, um, counting on getting the same amount of assessment dollars out of the properties within the corridor. We did increase the township contribution. Um, in part, that's been conversations that Councilwoman Castellino has had with the mayor and with you all about the need that that we really have within, within the corridor. The cash amount of 40,809 has not changed for 20 years. I'm not sure where that number came from. It's been that number. It, um, has to do with snowflakes and garbage and maintenance downtown. Um, we do have a vacancy or vacancy report. Um, we did put the, uh, the Lofts commercial property online. And on, we've, what I mean by online, we haven't really counted that towards our vacancy rate. It was about eight or nine percent, I think, at the end of last year. And we creeped up to like 11 or 12% in the middle of this year and now we've dropped down again to about 5%. But we, I wanted just to clear up for you that there's, there's three, three levels of that. There's actual vacancies that are true storefronts that we need a tenant in. Then we have the second group, which is things that are leased and coming and aren't really available to be leased anymore. And then the third,
Excuse me, Ms. Brill, just for my colleagues sake, what you're referencing to is the email you sent to them earlier today, not what's on.
I'm sorry, yes, it was the email that I sent. Um, I just referenced it in, um, in the block right, right here. So the, um, the third, the third area of vacancy is our second floor. We have, um, you know, several properties. I think there's three or four that are just second floors. Those are typically offices, they're smaller, uh, properties that are available. The other driving force within the budget is our, our business mix and our sustainability. Um, I'm going to jump to another slide, this, this slide um, to talk about that. So within our corridor, there's 180 properties. And on, we stretch from Valley Road and Central Avenue where the 7-Eleven is and we go all the way down to Harrison Avenue and we go to the, the Montclair and Orange border on Harrison Park, Watchon, you know, and Northfield. The, um, out of those 180 properties, we have 50 property owners that own their business in that store. So they're like John McAvoy at Select Auto, um, O'Hara Electric and on, at O'Hara Electric. So there, there's 50 of them among the 180 properties, which I think is like a pretty neat number. That these are people that have really bought in. They've invested in the property and they've kept their store there. Um, the second thing that I think is interesting about our property owners is 11 of them own more than one property, which I think is neat. Um, and we have 11 different that own like two or three. We also have three property owners that own more than two properties. So we have, um, you know, the Welland Hotel is owned by the same person that owns Willow and Olivia Building and the strip mall that Oak Barrel is in. And we have a couple of owners that are like that. They, um, I like to see their, their newer property owners, they've, they've seen something that they like and they've picked up more property to, you know, help us build our downtown. Um, the those are all the businesses that are around. These are ones that I thought were, um, were interesting to be noted. We probably have 25 businesses that have been here for more than 30 years. Um, and that's just amazing that, you know, Select Auto Repair is celebrating 35 years in March. O'Hara Electric's got to be celebrating like 50 years here. Wilman's Autobody, there's, there's just, there's a lot of them. Um, and I know that, uh, you know, some people say there's not that much stuff for you to, you know, to find downtown, but we do really have some very successful longstanding businesses within the corridor. So let's jump to, out of the 180 properties, we have 252 storefronts. So we have some properties that have two stores in them or three stores in them. So, um, with our second and third and fourth floor properties, we have over 300 businesses within the corridor. And those are businesses that, you know, the downtown alliance organization has to kind of keep track of them. So I broke out the, um, the mix of of how we kind of classify things. We have 42 restaurants. We have 37 hair, nails, beauty and barber shops. That includes a couple of makeup places and eyelash places that seem to be the new trend these days. We have 20 auto repair and service-related, um, businesses. We have 50 home contractor and business services. It's a big category. So that would be folks like O'Hara Electric, um, Advantage Pest Control, uh, different businesses that are home-related. They also include, um, businesses like, um, business services. So faxing companies or you go and pay your bills there and convenience stores that kind of, that kind of convenient business-related, um, business. We have 35 dental, medical and health and wellness, um, businesses. And that is everything from collegiate water to all of our medical facilities. We have 11 liquor store and straight-up convenience stores that, um, that don't sell, you know, any package, any like cold cuts or a bagel and a, and coffee in the morning. So those are convenience stores. We have 20 insurance and banking and tax preparation. We have 16 retail and clothing store, I'm sorry, six retail and then 21 other. There's a few properties that are just parking lots or driveways of other properties and that's what's in that, that 21. Um, what is definitely, um, something that we want to see more of is our general retail and, um, and clothing. We, um, we definitely need for those 5% of the retail available ready stores to be able to attract, um, you know, people that like to sell things that we like to buy every day. So that is definitely an area of focus and the board is, um, you know, well aware of that. So that goes back to our business and sustainability. Um, we, um, we definitely want to work on our business mix inventory and, um, and our sustainability, you know, we, we have, I think we lost two businesses through COVID. You know, the numbers are still out and, you know, it's probably not going to, um, hopefully, we might lose one or two more. But we've, um, we, we've sustained a lot and, um, and they're working really hard, so continue to support all of them. The other driving force in our budget is, um, three new vendors and three new things that we, we did last year with the, um, adoption of with, oh, someone's come in. With new council people coming on the council and getting new representatives on our board that kind of, you know, shifts the focus a little bit. And we all attended a big downtown New Jersey training in February. Um, and there's more training coming in February that we can go again. And basically what we, um, we all saw something different in all the different breakout rooms and we came up with three really great ideas that cost a little bit of money, but that were on things that we implemented this past year. The, um, the first thing is the mobile app. And, um, I gave you a screenshot and I can send you this. And um, I gave you a screenshot and I can send you this PowerPoint tomorrow if you want. Um, the, the, can you see my pointer on the screen? Okay, so this is what the face of the app is going to look like. Um, and it's an Android and an Apple app, so anybody can get it. And you pretty much, you open it up and you click one of the icons. And you go right to our directory, right to our parking lots, right to the restaurants. And this has six screens of, of information that you can swipe through. Um, I always ask my board to, you know, wake up in the morning and open up the downtown Facebook and Instagram page. And like, comment and share anything that we're talking about. And it's hard for some folks to find Facebook. I'm on Facebook all the time. Um, people aren't. So this is an icon that will have the township social media on it and downtown social media. As well as the Chamber of Commerce social, which um, should get us all talking and liking and understanding where. Where to find the important things that, you know, we all care about. You can, this, the Springfield, Woodbridge, Glassboro and Point Pleasant Beach have the same app that we have. There's other apps that are out there, more government driven. This is definitely a marketing, you know, let's delve into our community. And find out what is all the good stuff at your fingertips. So you can download any of those apps. And see what ours is gonna look like and how we're gonna maneuver. If you end up going down the shore on Point Pleasant Beach, you can find all the parking lots, all the restaurants. And see everything and it's ours is being laid out the same way as, as theirs were. The other screens are, um, once you click on, click on your icon. What I love about this is Ospac. Everybody says, I didn't know what was happening at Ospac. I don't know where Ospac is. The stuff about, you know, what's happening up at Ospac. Now, you can on Friday morning hit Ospac. And the link will be there and it'll tell you what the show is, how much it is, everything you need to know about what's happening in Ospac. Same with the library, same with West Orange Public Schools, same with on the museum and the farmer's market. All that information will be, you know, right there and it's free to anyone that downloads it. We um, we looked at this at a, at a twofold. Everything that, that we planned for. Last year and bringing into this year has been. Educating and bringing awareness to the residents that are here and the visitors. We have tons of people coming into the golf course. We have lots of people visiting, um, not as much as before with COVID, but the museum. And it's high point was getting sixty thousand people, you know, a year. We have a hundred thousand people seeing, going through the zoo. If we had, you know, a little sign, download the app, you'll be able to find. You know, all of the businesses right in that area. If you're at the Wilshire Grand and you're not sure where to eat, download the app. And then boom, in this little geo circle will be all the little restaurants in that area. And then you get a list of everything that's in town. So we really wanted to attract the, the people that were visiting here for the weekend or a week. And the residents that are here that still can't find information. Um, so that, I'm hoping that by, you know, the, the end of January, we'll be ready to, to like download it and start playing around with it. But in the meantime, go to any of those four other towns and download it. The um, the second thing that was a big driving force for us was um Swazian Communication Group. Michelle and I ended up in a breakout room at the conference and we met, um, Susan. Um, Elizy is her last name and um, and we just loved everything that she had to say. She represents some really great downtowns. She sits on, um, a couple of really good boards, is very familiar, has a long history. Of um, of advertising for townships and downtowns and especially a tourism. Uh, side of, of the business and that's what Michelle really, really liked. Um. So we brought them on board um, in April and they've been working for us straight through from April until December. And we created um, our newsletter. One of the things that I always struggle trying to get all the information. In and be able to get a newsletter out before the end of the month. And um, and we've regularly done that since April. Um, which is, uh, which is good and it, it provides really good information for our residents. We've also picked up, um, three hundred and fifty new accounts within our newsletter. Um, and our open rate is like thirty-five percent, which is really great. Um, you know, comparatively, we've also attracted more Instagram followers. And on, and we picked up about fifty, I think our old number was like six ninety-five in Twitter followers. So we're up to about seven fifty, um, which is, you know, interesting. And the more things that we do, the more. Um, the more people will take notice of us. We also have gotten consistent tri-state area on news coverage. We've been on, you know, Channel Four and Channel Seven and, um, the Bergen Record picked up stuff for us. So we're definitely. You know, making an impact, not to mention the League of Municipalities Magazine, um, that just came out in November. Um, so.
PBS, PBS.
Right, yes, CBS and um, PBS did a thing on the, the museum. So it, uh. It, there's, there's been a lot. In addition, um, to all of that, we're, we're more branded. If you've seen every, every post, all of the, the social media and the newsletters that we've. Sent out were more consistent than we've ever been and on. And I think that really providing the advertisement for uh, the businesses that need your support. Every um, every, uh, every day. They also will help us. We only did a couple of, um. Uh, like, we did Downtown Thursdays and then the five K run and the holiday open house. So they were able to help us. We, um. We boosted things a little bit differently on Facebook, um, with their guidance. So. Um, you know, the marketing team is learning how to, how to say what to say better and on. And it's really just been a pleasure to work with them. They, they made fun of me because I said, any day with Swazian is a better day than. You know, me all by myself here downtown. Um, so, uh, but they really are a great partner and. Um, are willing to, to help us and have brought up some deficiencies within our website. And, and things that we really need to concentrate on as, as a board and on, and to, to work, work through this coming year. Um, then the other vendor was, um, Emily Mance. And on, and she's an event planner. I actually met her in Bloomfield. And on, and she does all kinds of stuff in Newark and Bloomfield and all over the place. Actually. Bloomfield and West Orange is kind of sharing her now and on, and they're not as happy about that as we are. Um, but we did, we had a lot of rain on Thursday nights in the summer. Um, so we were able to tuck in seven of our eight plans, uh, Downtown Thursdays in July, June and July. And we picked up that last one in, um, in August. And this is a sample of the, the map that Emily put together. She, she and a few downtown people worked with all of the business owners to get them to. You know, explain what it is that they do and what they, what they can offer to. Any event that would happen in their area on a Downtown Thursday. And we made up maps and we also advertised the businesses with videos and publicity and giveaways. And on, and we ended up having a really, uh, you know, some well-attended. Council President posted the, uh, the ice carving gentleman and he, he was in Bloomfield for the. For their holiday show when he made a reindeer out of ice. Um, so he made a dragon for us, which I think is, um. You know, was pretty great. But, uh, so we, we are gonna continue to do Downtown Thursdays. I'm gonna unshare our second seal of the faces. We're gonna continue to do Downtown Thursdays, but I don't think we're gonna do it, um, every week. It seemed to be, um, so much to get the businesses to decide what they're gonna do to help us on that day. And then for us to advertise it. That we always felt like we were, you know, a little bit late, um, getting to it. So I think we're gonna end up starting early. Or maybe do once a month and on, and figure out how the street there fits into there. Um, so that is our budget. If you, um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. No questions. There you go.
My hand is raised. Maybe it's a little. My hand is raised. I'm not sure if you can see it up here. Maybe I'll change.
Corner there, okay.
I'm sorry?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, Megan, just for the members of the public, because I, I know when I was sitting on this other side of the days. Um, I really didn't understand what the CIT was. Can you just explain what that is, how we come to that funding source? Thank you.
For sure. Um, so the, um, the CIT is a special improvement district. It was set up by ordinance about twenty years ago. The council at that time identified that there was an area within the downtown that needed a little extra support. And doing that, they created, um, this special improvement district and identified. It's floated from about two hundred and fifty properties down to about the one eighty that it is now. And those businesses within that corridor, when I talked about the beginning, starting over by Central Avenue and going all the way to Harrison Ave. Those properties all are assessed, um, an assessment. And it ranges, we have folks that pay a lot, a lot of money, uh, in every year in addition to their taxes. And then we have folks that, um, you know, pay two or three hundred dollars a year. So there's no real average. I don't, when I first took over the job, I was like, well, what's the average of our assessment? And there really isn't an average. There was like a hundred dollar average and then a couple thousand dollar average. So.
Megan, you should explain, excuse me, Councilwoman, you should explain how that money gets reinvested.
So that is actually the, on the very first number that's in our, in our budget. It's the CIT assessment. So those hundred and eighty properties pay a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars into the township and then the town. The township due John Gross gives that to downtown and downtown runs all of everything that we have to do down, down here. Uh, with that money. Oh, I.
But also the grants of the grants involved for the facade improvements and signage. It goes into a lot of reinvestment.
That's on, and last two years ago, we actually hit the highest. I think we had sixteen thousand that we reinvested into. Um, the facade program. This year, I think it's eleven or twelve. Um, it was a little bit short. Two, two businesses didn't end up getting, uh, getting their improvements done yet. But yes, there's a big piece of the design budget goes towards, um, holiday decorations, which is crazy how much snowflakes actually cost. And our facade program. So we give twenty thousand dollars back out to any of the businesses or property owners within the corridor. It's a matching grant of two thousand, of fifty percent up to two thousand dollars. So, and we, um, we usually I do enumerate them. Um, I just thought that the background on. On where the money is coming from and who our business inventory mixes would, would matter to you all. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember, is that your hand up?
It is. Thank you, Council President. I, I didn't have a question before, but I do now. How do we assess, if there's no average, like, is there? How do we determine what the assessment is for each individual property?
Right, there's a multiplier that was set up way, way, way back when. And there's a difference between the businesses that are storefronts on Main Street. And the office buildings and then off of Main Street. They definitely identified that, um, a special improvement district. Lends itself more easily to the, to a storefront situation. So that the businesses that were not on Main Street paid a little bit less based on square footage. And on, and the other businesses that are off of the, the main area pay even a little bit less. But the multiplier is like. John, it's like five tenths of a thousandth of a point difference. But it's based on square footage. So somebody like eighty Main Street. Paying a lot more money than somebody like Select Auto Repair.
And, and, and ju- just to get a little bit more in the weeds, it, 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 those three different levels. Um, are, are the, the factors of, that distinguish between the different types or the, the different characteristics of, of the businesses. But then it's all, those factors are multiplied against their assessed value. So, so the more, the more valuable your property. You know, the, uh, and depending on what category you're in, the, the higher your assessment's gonna be.
Thank you.
Thank you. So John, that raises a question. If there's ever a tax appeal, does that affect, how does that affect the assessment?
Uh, directly. If, if there's a change in the assessment, well, you know, up or down. It will, the, the, there, the, when I say the assessment, meaning their, their property, the value of their property assessment. The CIT assessment will fluctuate with that.
We, we had that situation happen right before the battery building was redeveloped. The, um, the assessment went down to, from like seven million down to two million. And that was a year that the CIT assessment was ninety-seven thousand dollars. And, um, we. Are prepared to live within those parameters and prepare, prepare for that all the time. Um, so we, uh, we understand that, that it's, that it's the same this year, but that could, that could change and we'd have to adapt.
I was happy to hear that the, um, mobile app, you feel that it, you're so excited about it that you feel it will be ready to launch at the end of the month?
I, I think so. I think so. It's the only thing that I'm working on, on really outside of, um, the budget presentation. It's, it's, it's the app and just making sure that, uh, that we're feeding in the parking lots. But is a big deal. We have like eleven parking lots that need to go in and we don't have great pictures of parking lots or understanding. So. Um, there's just a lot. I don't wanna have to change it after it gets baited. So we're making sure that all the information that's going in is, is as good and accurate as, as we can make it.
It sounds that way.
And the PRC has been really helpful with that. Um, Joe Fagan and Michelle Castellino have really got them. Um, to be able to talk to the businesses outside of the corridor. We didn't want it just to be a downtown, um, app. We want it to benefit the whole town. And on, and that benefits downtown. When, when people are looking, you know, for a store up and across the train, they may see something that they like, you know, downtown.
That was one of the things I noticed in your presentation, that it was more of a townwide and not just the downtown corridor. And I was wondering if any of the clicks there would bring people to historic sites and, um, the historical markers. I would imagine with Joe Fagan working on it, that would have to be one of the.
Yeah, the, um, the geo fencing of, of our marketing is something that, you know, we're really gonna be able to take advantage of. Folks that are coming to the zoo definitely are ripe for the picking to come and be advertised to about. The, um, about the museum. Same thing with folks that are maybe, uh, at the hotel at the manor. Um, would wanna see. So, uh, the geo fencing and how we're gonna, you know, really target our marketing dollars with the help of the experts. At Swazian will, uh, will be able to guide us on that.
Excellent. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. Um, question, Ms. Brill. Is the CIT assessment paid by the business owner or the property owner?
It's the property owner. It's the property owner. And that's, that's what is the big difference between like the Chamber of Commerce and downtown. Because the property owner, only the fifty that, you know, see us day to day. The business owner doesn't necessarily understand that they get the benefit of, of all of us. We have to go in and explain who we are to them and say, we really don't need any money from you. We wanna help you advertise. Let me help you make your window look better. Um, but in the chamber, when you're a business, you understand the chamber. You're supposed to be part of the chamber. So you join. The businesses downtown don't necessarily understand that. So, but yeah.
How do we communicate when a new business comes downtown and let's say they pull a, a, a permit to open a business? Does that information automatically filter to you from the?
It's supposed to be, yes. It, it, it is. And it, I think it happens twofold. Folks within Town Hall, we have, um, all of our. Promotional material upstairs. It's hard when, um, when you can't just walk into building anymore. But the other way that, that they find out about us is word on the street. You know, we've never been, um, more available and visible. The, uh, one of the gals that just moved into Tory Corner, uh, called me and she said, you guys have a facade grant program? And, uh, I never want the first conversation with the business owner, say, we really need to look at your sign and, you know, can, can we, can we clean up your storefront? Um, so it was great that the lady across the street said they can help you. And, and that's how that, you know, they find out about us. But yeah. What, every CEO that comes through that's within a downtown corridor business, we, we see it. We get it.
And we have that plant, we have that set up also with the planning, uh, secretary and zoning secretary. To be sure that anything that is in the downtown corridor goes before the.
Yeah, and we get, we get all the, uh, any zoning and planning board applications.
Right.
Is, is there a list of services that's provided to the business owners on what? What you provide?
There's, there's information. There's, there's information on our website. And, um, it's one of the areas that Swazian has said that we need to beef up and we have a really great, um, template. That, um, we're gonna look at, you know, in the next couple of weeks, uh, that, that'll help that. But it, we, we advertise for them. They get a letter, they get a welcome packet. What we really find is that if we can get to the landlord to say, this is a really great selling point. That there's all these people over there that will help you make a great sign, help you make a great storefront, help you market your products better than you. Ever thought you could, if you are within this area. And on, and that's starting to, you know, resonate with, with the, some of the newer businesses that are here.
Thank you.
Excellent move. And also the design guidelines too, that you can share with business owners so that they know what to expect.
Yeah.
That's a very important component.
Yeah. The, um, the design guidelines are, you know, pretty, pretty thick and unwieldy. And Ron Raymond, the Chair of, of the Downtown Alliance is working with his design committee. And they are gonna adapt that just for like, uh, you know what, an easier to go through. The design guidelines are really for an architect or an engineer to understand what West Orange is, cares about, what we think is important about authentic design and all of that. The, you know, business owner just wants to know, what should my menu look like? You know, what should my store hours on the door look like? And, um, and that's where that design team can, can help us. There's four, I didn't talk about them. There's four teams of, of folks that, that work in, um, in groups. And that are part of downtown design, marketing and promotion, um, organization and economic development. So those are the four. And we have team leaders on all of them that, you know, work and meet. And, you know, come up with different ways that we can help our business and property owners.
Uh, Councilwoman Castellino.
Uh, thank you, Council President. So just a couple of points of notes I just wanted to, to add in. So, you know, what attracted us to Swazian also is that they're strong in economic development. They helped develop a lot of, uh, small downtowns and, um, and, and that was really instrumental in, in choosing them. Now, part of this design, um, we're able to start working on that now with the website is because, uh, thankful for our, uh, grant writer. Uh, and Swazian, because they gave us a lot of input on the grant. We were awarded the, uh, the marketing grant for the seventeen thousand. Uh, that is there. So now we'll have the funding that will be able to move forward with a lot of these projects. Um, that we need to get done to promote and, uh, bring, uh, support to the downtown. Uh, also want to note, you know, Ron Raymond's committee, Ma- Megan had mentioned that he's doing a great job as a chair, as well as all the other commissioners. Um, but, you know, they've been instrumental. They've been the boots on the ground, going to knock on the diff, on the storefronts and. And talking to the business owners and working with them to, you know, with the design setup. And we do have to get Megan out. Uh, Ms. Bro out more into, into the community. She's been really tied up with a lot of admin, uh, work this year. We're working on a lot of these grants. Um, the mayor's race was, was very time consuming. Uh, this mobile app is extremely time consuming. So once that gets up and running, it's very, and I, I really have to. Thank the PR commissioners for stepping up to the plate. They're gonna help us with the, a whole rollout that with Swazian, which hopefully come February. Uh, you know, we'll be able to present to the council the rollout of the, of the mobile app. It's really gonna be instrumental. Especially in driving the whole, you know, driving that the visitors that visit our community. To our, to our restaurants and our, and our stores, storefronts. Uh, also, um, I want to thank Joe Fagan. Uh, he's been instrumental too. Um, you know, he was in a different role. Uh, up until last year, uh, he used to work on his, uh, the TV show in the school and with COVID, we had a pivot. And, um, he really picked up some admin of responsibilities, uh, as well as a lot of different, unique projects. Which has been driving, uh, business to an attention to our storefronts. We appreciate all those efforts. Uh, and I, I appreciated, you know, this year we had, um, Edison Lofts, um, come, um, and participate, John Hoff. Um, uh, for them. Um, he is their, their, uh, property manager there and he's on our board now. And that's been instrumental, especially facilitating a lot of, uh, our meetings there. Uh, when we're, we're able to meet, we're back online now, unfortunately with the COVID. Um, but also getting involved with, with, uh, on the design committee as well. So, um, we look forward to a great year. And, uh, I, I really gotta give kudos to Ms. Bro. It, it, there was a lot. If you notice in the budget, she has not re- you know, received an increase in, in her salary in the past couple of years. Um, but yet her workload has increased tremendously. And, uh, we appreciate all your efforts, um, that, that you, you know, you gave to the downtown. Uh, not just this year, but in, in years prior. Um, and she, she's all over. Um, in case you haven't noticed, we also utilize Swazian because we have received money from, uh, our budget. Um, with townwide promotions as well. So they've been instrumental. Um, and the criteria for that is any kind of event that is townwide that we want to get outside the community. Come visit West Orange. Uh, you know, we're tapping into Swazian, uh, for that. And that exposure again, regionally has been phenomenal for us. So. Um, I just wanted to share those points with our colleagues and I, I hope you'll be supportive of, uh, the downtown budget this year. Thank you.
If there are no more questions, I would like to make motion to, um, to approve the downtown. Downtown budget. And I wanted to say that, please.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And I just going through the pictures with the two thousand twenty-one in review. Uh, for the slide presentation, Megan and Jo, and Joe Fagan were very helpful in that. But what I did see on the downtown Thursdays is a really nice collaboration between Downtown Alliance volunteers. And the Public Relations Commission. So not only are they collaborative on the app and promotion. They have also, um, attended many of the events as well. So, very nice.
It, they've been great. They, they've been a constant, a constant, uh, presence all, all year. They, they show up at our meetings, especially when we're zooming. Um, but whenever I need, need them at six o'clock in the morning to hold tables around Town Hall. Or decorating cafeteria to make it look.
You did that.
They, they, they've been great.
Okay, Madam Claire.
Uh, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry, did I screw up?
That's okay. No, you just have one left. Thank you. One person left.
Yeah. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, it's getting late. Um, ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-six seventy dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending chapter two, section seventeen point five. Chapter four, section thirty-three point one and chapter twelve, section twelve dash ten of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Smoking prohibited. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
This is the time for a public hearing for, if anyone has any.
If anyone has any questions on this particular ordinance. This is to extend the smoking prohibition for certain public areas to include cannabis product, products and electronic cigarettes. And to update the penalty provision governing violation of the smoking prohibition in municipally owned buildings and lands. Any questions, comments?
Is there anyone from the public?
Megan, any men, any members of the public?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Claire.
Okay, is there a motion to approve twenty-six seventy dash twenty-one? Oh wait, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll make the motion, but I just want to just stress to the administration. I know we've talked about signage in, in the parks, uh, in regards to adding, you know, the, this, um. You know, this, you know, with the, I can't even think, I'm sorry, with cannabis and the, uh, and the electronic cigarettes. And I, I know, you know, uh, and, and is the chief still here? I know we talked to, you know, how we're gonna enforce it. You mentioned the health department, but I think the signage is gonna be the, the big enforcement. Cause we, we are getting complaints, obviously not now in the winter, but in the, uh, springtime with, you know, parents in the parks complaining about. People in the park, uh, smoking and, you know, marijuana and, you know, cigarettes from time to time. But we, we need to make sure the signage is out there for the spring, please.
Yeah, Councilwoman, you're absolutely right. And we'll, we'll take a look at coordinating our signage, uh, in, in the parks in particular. Um, you know, for, for the, for the spring. There's also, uh, public education that, that, uh, when, when we do have our, uh, park. Um, rangers, if you will, the people that will basically are, are helped to oversee what's going on in our parks. And in the weekends and nights, uh, they, they can also participate in consumer education. About, about no smoke, smoking in the parks. Um, you know, I think we talked earlier, um, that probably the. Uh, because of the nature of it, the health department would be, be the primary enforcers of this. But that is not to say that, that other, um, people could not, if they're, when they're properly trained, also do enforcement. So we'll look at that as well.
And, and Dr. Cascone, my liaison meetings, Dr. Cascone and the school board members have been. Working with their, their health educators as, as well in educating the students. So, thank you, Mr. Gross. So I'm, I move, make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Count, uh, sorry. Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-six seventy-one dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter two, section fourteen point five. And establishing chapter two, section fourteen point nine of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Appointment of police department officers and personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
I'll move. Second.
So, sorry.
I have to do a roll.
Yes, I get it.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, seeing none. So if you recall, we passed an ordinance that, uh, was going to update the requirements. For appointment to the West Orange Police Department for entry level law enforcement positions. Uh, this ordinance is an amendment to clarify. Uh, it corrects and clarifies the ordinance to provide that nepotism policy governing appointments and hiring. Is for application when utilizing this alternate route, uh, appointment process. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you. Um, just, just for the public's sake, it, it's not that there is no existing nepotism policy for civil service. There is. When we adopted the alternate route program. That clause of nepotism was all encompassing to civil service as well as, um, alternate routes. So what this changes is, is, um, applicable to alternate route recruitment. And not that we are removing nepotism policy, um, across the board. Just wanted to be clear.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We had a lengthy discussion on that with the chief. Yes, thank you. Madam Claire?
Okay, is there a motion to approve twenty-six seventy-one dash twenty-one?
Count.
Yes, sir.
Did we get the public's input on this?
We asked. There was none.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve twenty-six seventy-one dash twenty-one?
I'll move. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-six seventy-two dash twenty-one, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash eighteen point one. One-way streets designated subsection seven dash seven point three, temporary parking prohibited for snow plowing and removal. Subsection seven dash twelve, parking prohibited for street cleaning and maintenance. Subsection seven dash fourteen point one C, night parking restricted. And subsection seven dash fourteen point seven, alternate side parking of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So move. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Again, are there any comments from the public?
Is, is, are these on first reading or?
This is second.
This is second reading?
Sorry, um, I moved to the wrong agenda.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Uh, Lenny is still on the call.
Oh, wait, Michelle, Castellino.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, do you?
Oh, I just, uh, no, no, that's okay, Council. I had a question for Mr. LaFleur.
Okay, so we'll, we'll ask Lenny to come back. Um, I'm just curious to know how the signage, um, works to explain this to the residents. That live on Joy Street or Valley Road.
Well, um, first, uh, everybody on the streets been noticed, uh, of the new regulation. So if they wanted to comment tonight, they were given the link, uh, to, to the Zoom. Um, uh, this was a, a, actually from a community meeting that was held by the police department. Uh, that was requesting this and even possibly, uh, placing speed tables. The speeds don't seem to warrant speed tables, um, but, uh, they were welcoming the one-way circulation. So, yeah, if you're familiar with the neighborhood, there's a street Lafayette Street, one block to the east. Uh, that is one-way, uh, southbound from, um, Carrie Street to Joyce Street. Uh, this would be one-way in the opposite direction northbound, uh, and that's gonna be to, um, from Joyce Street to Valley Road. Parking regs will change. We're gonna allow parking on both sides of the street because now the street is, is one-way. So there'll be different signs for parking. There'll be do not enter signs, uh, at Valley Road. There'll be one-way signs, um, at, at Joyce Street so that the public go, when this does take effect and there'll be notice to the residents. Um, that this is a one-way street.
Yes, great. Uh, Councilman, did that answer your question?
That, yes, it did. Yeah, I was wondering how the residents were gonna get notified.
Good. Okay, Madam Claire?
Is there a motion to approve twenty-six seventy-two dash twenty-one?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading, twenty-six seventy-four dash twenty-two. An ordinance amending chapter two, section forty-eight point two of the revised general ordinances of West Orange Municipal Insurance Fund Commission. Definitions. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move. Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. And Mr. Gross, if you can, uh, explain what prompted this, uh, change in the municipal insurance fund, in the commission itself. The legislative history read to allow other township employees besides elected officials and department heads to serve as commissioners.
That's correct. So the, the way the, the ordinance was in place, um, it prevented, quite frankly, the person who does the work. The, the, actually does most of the work as the Secretary of the Insurance Commission from actually serving as Secretary of, of the commission. So it ended up going to, um, like a, a department head or a, a, uh, an official. Um, or a, 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 uh, elected official. So this, this allows. So this this allows us to actually compensate the person who's doing the work. Uh, doesn't change the compensation in any way, shape or form. It's a matter of who who can actually receive.
Thank you. Any questions?
Does it, yeah, I'm sorry, I do, yes.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, I I know it doesn't um say it increases the number of um members, but is that something that will also be eventually increased?
Well, I I I don't anticipate right now.
Okay.
Change, any change in that. Obviously, that would be, if that was going to be requested, that would be a budgetary consideration that the council would see before it. Uh, at at budgets, at budget season. I can tell you that that is not anticipated to be a change in this year's budget. Um, but in the future, that that I guess it could be.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Matute Brown. Uh, John, that raises a question then that if there are now eight people on the board. Does the addition of this uh secretary, is that a voting member? Usually we have odd number commissions.
It is, it is not a voting member. This is, you know, you've always had a secretary of the insurance commission. And it was um. The the former administrator was was.
Yes.
Jack, Jack was the, he's not former administrator, it's Jack. Uh, Ja- Ja- Jack was the 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 secretary. Um, the but but again, it it the work was done in the business administrator's office. It it, to me, it's an issue of fairness. The person that's doing the work should be compensated. And so moving forward, I'd like to see that happen.
Okay, thank you for that. And we've had that before where we have stipends for people that serve, you know, I think even in the clerk's office, we had a stipend for the ABC secretary. And um, that was the first one I could think of, but I'm sure that there are others that have come up in our budget.
Yeah, we probably have a half dozen or so, you know, of those that are uh remaining that that are in ours, our salary ordinances.
To be continued. Okay, Madam Claire?
Ordinance twenty six seventy five dash twenty two and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven. Traffic subsection seven dash nineteen through streets, seven dash twenty stop intersections. And seven dash twenty one multiway stop intersection of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I'll move. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Uh, yes. And again, a question for Lenny. Lenny, was this generated by the population on those streets? Or is this something that was brought to your attention?
Um, this was uh brought to my attention by some of the population on on the streets, so.
And survey was done, was survey was done?
But but it was actually instituted by uh by by residents in each neighborhood.
I won't ask, Lenny. Or mixed feelings about it in my household.
And 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 again, that, oh, everybody will get notified the same way with the link, Mr. Lapore.
Um, uh, what I'll do is I'll uh, I'll go down um e- each street of. Um, I'm I'm not going to necessarily say I'm going down Fairview Avenue to St. Cloud. I'll think about that, but. Oh, it doesn't take much more to to do the whole street, so I'll do that and and provide links.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, uh, next on our agenda is.
Pending matters, new matters.
New matters, new matters, council discussion.
Just, I have one thing.
One thing on pending matters, and I know that we did move our council liaison announcements uh to this part of our our meeting. So Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, just real quick, with Mr. Lapore, he's still there. I'm sorry to bother you. Just real quick, it's something you and I've discussed numerous times and with Mr. Gross and the mayor. I I just looking for, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't want to mention it because Ms. Ms. Brill had her presentation. But it's in regards to the, you know, we've talked about um reorganizing that Abe Lando lot. In uh the Tory Corner section of town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just like to know when administration would be planning. On really digging deep into that and finding a a solution for that lot. And and, you know, I know we, you said you had to put some money in the capital account for that. And, you know, it's just a timeframe, just to hold you to a timeframe on it, because it is instrumental for parking for those businesses.
What I can do is I'll 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 spot, I'll talk with Ms. Brill. Uh, maybe she gets some of her board members together and 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 we look at that lot. Um, that lot has been been put together through the years by acquiring small, small lots. And and that's kind of why it looks the way it is today. Um, it's, it's a bit, um, I I don't want to say disjointed, but. It it it's been put together over years from small acquisitions. So we'll we'll look at it and uh may maybe there's other acquisitions that need need to be made. Maybe we need to go back and look at the um, the basketball court facility that's there.
Yeah.
Um, th- those are some of the things that would come to mind.
All right. Good, than, thank you, Mr. Lapore, because I just want to now see if we could get that, you know, moving. We've been talking about it for over two years now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Lenny, and that also with Congressman Payne being on our call, talking about road improvements and other types of improvements. There may be grant, grants available for that type of infrastructure?
Um.
Something we can look at?
Just, um, I don't know whether specifically it talked about parking lots. But maybe there's some economic improvement activities that relate to infrastructure uh that that certainly could be considered for.
Good. Thank you. Any other pending matters? Seeing none, Councilwoman Castellino, you are still unmuted if you have any um council liaison appointments. Uh, I'm sorry, announcements that you would like to make?
Uh, no, our PR, PR commission uh Zoom meeting this Thursday night. So if anyone's interested in in coming on, just go to the township website. Uh, information will be posted on the calendar.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Um, thank you. Just to um reiterate what I stated earlier, um, we will be looking, having a discussion tomorrow with the administration. Um, to figure out the logistics of the website hosting the information for the um. Cannabis task force to include the minutes, agenda, um, meeting links as well as um. A request for applications and how that process, much like the the one that's presently used, um, will will occur. Um, OS pack, bo- and and so just, um, we don't have another meeting scheduled yet in January. I was letting everyone kind of um go back to being family and, you know, around the holidays. And so I will um be sending a doodle poll out to the task force members to see when we can meet this month. Um, like I said, the draft application has been more formalized by our legal department, so we'll take a look at that. Um, and post that as soon as we um have a space to do so. Um, OS pack, and I'm sorry we did not get them in. It just, so many things are happening towards the end. The OS pack board does have a meeting scheduled, um, and that meeting is um open to the public. It is posted on the township website, January tenth at ten thirty. Um, I will ask uh the um, the board chair to please um. Uh, reach out to you, um, council president, to see when they can do their presentation to the council for their financials. They typically do it at the um, at the end of the year in December, but things have been a little hectic. Um, but I'll I'll ask that they reach out to you to schedule something. Um, that's it for me, council president. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, next uh upcoming meeting in January or beginning of February. Councilman Rutherford?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Tomorrow night is the open space recreation committee meeting. We um are, the link is on the township website. We are meeting via Zoom uh due to uh the obvious COVID. Um, escalation in the cases. Um, so please, for all of those that are interested, please come on out tomorrow night. Uh, pedestrian safety advisory board is on the twelfth. That's next Wednesday. Um, and I think that's it for me.
Excellent, thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. Um, so I uh. Council liaison updates, the Historic Preservation Commission uh meets on the second Wednesdays of each month. Uh, the meetings were held via Zoom last year and will continue to do so this year until um otherwise noted. Um, last year, twenty twenty one, um, we met and included in our achievements. Overseeing the restoration of the Llewellyn Park Gatehouse and the pending council approval of four properties as historical designations. That includes Holy Trinity Episcopal Church, uh, the State Diner, uh, Williams McManus Lehman House. And the Hedges Block, which is the former hardware store on fifty six Main. Um, the George V Hecker Carriage House on Thirty Six Ridge Road was introduced, but will be reconsidered at a later time. Um, the rent leveling board meets on the first mon- uh first Thursday monthly. Uh, however, this month's meeting was pushed back a little bit um so that we can continue doing some uh reorganization. Um, with how we are meeting as a board. Um, the board assists landlords and tenants in order to comply with all the provisions of chapter fifteen. Of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange and the New Jersey State statutes. Um, as you all may recall, this board was revamped. It has been on our township ordinance statutes. Uh, for many, many years, but had not been functioning. And so under the administrative leadership of Mr. Smeraldo, um, who has been a tremendous asset. And just making sure we have updated the township website um with current information about uh housing. Uh, during this COVID pandemic. Uh, the West Orange Senior Citizen Housing Authority um also meets monthly. We held um a meeting in December. We had not met uh since June of last year with the pandemic. Um, many challenges arose at our senior buildings as a result of COVID. Many of our activities were canceled and limited visitation to curtail the spread of COVID and protect our residents. Um, however, they were able to complete and successfully um refurnish some of the common areas. As well as some other capital improvements uh to the building. That completes uh my updates for my liaison. Just wanted to also make note that a night in the cold West Orange, which was a sleep out event. That we had tentatively um upcoming on September, on Saturday, January fifteenth. Um, we are going to postpone that event. It was an outdoor sleeping event to bring awareness and recognition to our homeless population and families. Um, however, just due to this increased COVID. Incidents, we are going to keep our residents safe and we will host that at a later time. Um, so please stay tuned. If anyone would like to make any contributions um to our homeless, and that was going to include residents at two seventy five Northfield Avenue. In addition to uh members of our uh population, homeless population that we are aware of in town. Um, please feel free to make any of those contributions directly to the Mayor's Sunshine Fund. That completes my updates, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for all of the updates. Thank you. Um, picking up on the Rent a House Board now is council liaison. I do not have a schedule yet for the meeting dates for two thousand twenty two. But I do hope and pray that the residents are staying safe and cautious and smart. To stay well. We did receive an email from the Township Engineer just earlier this afternoon. Talking about the um New Jersey American Water installing a new water main. On Gaston Street, right in front of the library, and I was pleased to read that he added it would provide superior water flow. For fire service at the Rent a House. So, thank you for that upgrade. Um, West Orange Arts Council, we haven't met yet. We will meet next uh Thursday. But when we left at the end of the year, their holiday gift shop um was just astounding. Moving the product that, the homemade products that have been in there, so they did an outstanding job uh with the gift shop. Masks were required, and it turned out to be a really nice end of the year event uh for the Arts Council. Um, a lot planned ahead, so I would just invite everyone to visit W O arts dot org. To uh, to stay current on the events there with the Arts Council. West Orange Environmental Commission, I think we ended the note on, uh, we ended the year on such a great note. Thanks to the community donating thousands of dollars worth of toys to the twenty foot toy trailer. That is up at the recycling center at five ninety Mount Pleasant Avenue. Um, we were able to meet with Second Chance Toys and have all of those donated uh toys donated. So the whole premise was to keep plastic out of the landfills, but all of these plastic toys are now be being put to to good use. So that was a a great note. On our agenda this evening, I did speak with our Newtown forester. Uh, I had asked about, Joe Fagan mentioned at the top of our meeting about Christmas trees and putting trees out. And I have asked the administration if there was a way to recycle that tree, the trees. Where a few years ago, we had a partnership with the Shore Town where they are collecting trees and they're used to replenish the beaches. So I'm hoping that we can follow up on that. To see if we can create such partnership again. And to thank the forester because there was a resolution there about another grant to create our tree inventory uh report. And it was mentioned before about the planning board. We are going to meet tomorrow evening. That is uh January fifth at seven thirty, a virtual meeting. Uh, to update the reexamine the master plan to include. Their review of the electric vehicle charging stations and also, as we mentioned before. Uh, the ordinance that's governing cannabis businesses here in town. And. And I thank you all again for your patience. Um, I know we went far over, uh, we exceeded our conference agenda, but um. I think it was well worth it. I think it gave us a lot of information. Uh, just it's the start of the new year. We'll keep closer. Uh, attention to the clock and uh moving forward, but I appreciate everyone's patience. With that. So thank you all.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So COVID overshadowed pretty much every conversation that we've he- heard this evening. So I just uh implore everyone to continue to stay safe and be smart. So that you can stay well. Good night all. Thank you.
Good night.